I'm using up all my words.
Excuse me for one second.
Mr. Mayor, this is Chris. We have your quorum. We have everything running and we're ready when you are.
Alright, thank you. Counsel, are we ready? Alright, we will go ahead and call the meeting to order. For the record, it is Tuesday, March 23rd at 6:01 PM. We'll begin this evening's regular meeting with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh. Councilwoman Perro.
Here.
Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland. Mayor Simison.
Here. Our next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would all rise and please join Councilman Hoagland in the Pledge of Allegiance. Our next item on the agenda is a community invocation, which will be delivered by Troy Drake with Calvary Chapel. It looks like he is there. So Pastor Drake, you're recognized. Thank you for being here. For those that are here, if you'd like to join us in the invocation or take this as a moment of silence and reflection.
Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, would you join me in a word? Dear Lord, I was reminded, sitting here, that Ecclesiastes says, "You are God in heaven, and here I am, I on earth, and so I'll let my words be few." And God, just a few things here for this evening, Lord. First of all, I just thank you that we have this city and that it's run by such a great group of people. And I just pray for everything that goes on in this building, whether it's the employees or the elected representatives. Lord, you give them a lot of discernment and wisdom on how to conduct the city business. Lord, we're praying for safety for our community tonight and every night. Lord, we're thankful for the first responders and those who protect the safety of our citizens. And we're just praying that people would pursue peace here in Meridian and that the needs would be met for the hungry and those who are frightened. And so, God, we know that you care about every detail. You said that you care if a sparrow falls to the ground. And so certainly you care about each person in Meridian as well as all the businesses conducted here. And so, Lord, we just honor you and give you this night. And once again, God, I just pray for Meridian that there would be continued peace and safety and goodwill towards each other here in this city. And Lord bless the council members here tonight in Jesus' name. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you, Pastor Drake.
Mr. Mayor.
Our next item is adoption of the agenda. Councilman Hoagland.
Yes, I would move that we adopt the agenda as published. Sorry, second.
I have a motion, a second, to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. The motion is agreed to and the agenda is adopted. Next up is our consent agenda.
Mr. Hoagland. Yes, Councilman Cavanagh. Going to ask that we pull item number seventeen off the consent agenda for just a quick conversation. And with that change, I move that we approve the consent agenda as published.
Mr. Mayor, I would second the motion as amended.
I have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda with number seventeen removed. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. The motion is agreed to. The items are passed. What I moved was item seventeen, the Finance Department Annual Fund Balance Transfer Proposal. Councilman Cavanagh, would you like to be recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I don't anticipate this is going to be a lengthy conversation. Appreciate the memo that was provided to council, just noting the million dollars that's being moved to the Public Safety Fund. Not opposed to that in any way. I just was curious if those dollars are intended to be earmarked for any particular future project or just moved over to the fund to be considered as maybe part of our budget process in the future.
I'll ask our CFO if he'd like to respond or if he'd like me to respond.
Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to address the memo if you want me to.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Cavanagh, the one million dollars that I'm recommending to transfer from the general fund to the Public Safety Fund, as per stated in the memo, is for the future replacements of public safety vehicles. In an analysis of the next five to 10 years of public safety vehicle replacements, we have over nine million dollars of vehicle needs and apparatus needs. My philosophy is during the good years, you save away for the later years. If there are bad years, we had a strong year last year. I think it's, it would be prudent of us to help out the future council's decisions in future years as apparatus and vehicle replacements for public safety are in need over the next 10 years. And that's what the one million dollars would be quote-unquote, as you call earmarked. Again, it goes to a fund that will be committed to those purposes only. But that's what the one million dollar recommendation from my desk to your desk is.
And if I could just add on to that, it does not prevent these funds from being reallocated for other purposes in the future should the need arise. There's always that ability to re, to change them to another fund or other purpose if necessary.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I appreciate that and appreciate Mr. LaVoy's kind of explanation. I think it's very prudent, thoughtful, and agree with the philosophy. We've got a good opportunity to put some dollars away for what we know is going to be a pending need and appreciate staff's recommendation on that.
Any other questions on this topic? If not, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I move approval of the Annual Fund Balance Transfer Proposal from the Finance Department as presented in item seventeen.
Second motion?
I have a motion, a second, to approve item seventeen, the Finance Department Annual Fund Balance Transfer Proposal. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Then the item is agreed to. Next item up is proclamations. Under nineteen items is procurement month. I will turn this over to Mr. Hoagland.
Mr. Mayor.
Since everyone's farther than six feet from me, I'll just dispense with this to read a proclamation. When you use the word procurement several times, you have to enunciate clearly on that. So I think that will help. Well, I appreciate the opportunity, Mr. Mayor, to do this proclamation on your behalf. You will be signing it, I understand. So but I think it's important when people hear public procurement, they might, you know, their eyes kind of glaze over. But when you think about procurement and the importance to to a city, to a state, public entities, you know, it's very important when it comes to the transparency, to the fairness, and really to the efficiency of the taxpayers. That you have people involved. It is a professional organization that they're part of and they're very up to date and they make sure rules are adhered to. And we have that transparency, fairness, and saving taxpayer dollars wherever possible. So it's my pleasure to read the proclamation from the office of the mayor. Whereas, the public procurement profession plays a significant role in the efficiency and effectiveness of both government and business. And whereas, in addition to the purchase of goods and services, procurement adds value to the organization by performing such functions as executing, implementing, and administering contracts, developing strategic procurement strategies, and cultivating working relationships with suppliers and other departments within the organization. And whereas, Idaho government procurement professionals dedicate themselves to providing the best value for every taxpayer dollar and continue to expand their knowledge, skills, and abilities. And whereas, the Idaho Public Purchasing Association through its members is committed to providing high caliber strategic logistical and operational support of all agencies associated with the chapter. And whereas, the IPPA recognizes, supports, and practices the public procurement values and guiding principles of accountability, ethics, impartiality, professionalism, service, and transparency established by the Institute for Public Procurement. Therefore, Mayor Robert E. Simison does hereby proclaim March 21st as procurement month in the city of Meridian and urges the residents of our community to join the Idaho Public Purchasing Association in recognizing the role of the purchasing and materials management profession within business, industry, and government.
Thank you, Councilman Hoagland. Appreciate you doing that. I'd ask Mr. Watts if he has any comments that he'd like to add.
Sure. I'd like to say thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, for acknowledging the procurement profession. I'd like to thank the best as procurement officers, as the unsung heroes behind the scenes of most of the exciting adventures that the city undertakes. You know, we purchased the engineering services for projects, for big construction projects, and purchased the construction services for projects like the wastewater plant expansion, the new fire station, the police station. So it's kind of nice to have you guys acknowledge the work that we do behind the scenes to the general public. We're definitely behind the scenes. They don't see our faces. They don't know what is involved, but I know you guys do. And I just want to say thank you for acknowledging that. And Sandra and I will do our best to continue to keep us in the eyes of our citizens and our vendors in a good light. And we strive to be transparent, ethical, fair in all of our doing. So I just want to say thank you again. And see if Sandra has anything to say as well.
Yes. So, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I personally just want to say thank you for your support for what Keith and I do. It's such a pleasure and an honor to just be a member of the community and do my best ethically for our citizens. So thank you. On behalf of Keith and I, it's a pleasure working for all of you.
Thank you both. We appreciate your kind words. You know, but this is supposed to be in recognition of what you all are doing. So thanks for your work. Councilman Borton, did you have some comments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I might have mentioned this to Keith. Sandra, I haven't had a chance to share it with you, but you may already know this. But we hear from around the state when folks talk about procurement and how municipalities can properly run their finances, that what is Meridian doing? Your team over there is recognized throughout the state, if not the West Coast, as the best of the best. It's just no question. In the legislature in session, and we've talked about this, Keith, with your work down there, year after year, everybody knows Meridian is the place. Meridian is tip of the spear in knowing how to properly run procurement, bidding, every facet of what you do. So that's just really impressive. It makes us all feel really great and proud of your accomplishments. So this proclamation certainly well deserved. So thank you both and the whole team.
Councilman Borton. Again, appreciate all you guys do. Now I'll let you get back to the rest of your evening. And you know, we would have loved to do this before thirty, but I appreciate you making yourself available at six to save you for this purpose.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Have a good evening.
You too. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the public forum. Mr. Corcoran, we haven't been signed up under this item?
Mr. Mayor, we did not. Thank you.
Okay. Then with that, we'll move into our action items. First item up is a public hearing for summer 2021 fee schedule. The Meridian Parks and Recreation Department will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. In front of you in exhibit A, you see our fee schedule for summer 2021. These will go into effect if passed on April ninth.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for staff? Okay, see no questions. This is a public hearing. Mr. Corcoran, do we have anybody sign up to testify on this item?
Mr. Mayor, I do not believe so, but I am checking now. There is nobody signed up.
Okay. Is there anybody in the room who would like to come forward? Or if you're on the Zoom call, you can use the raise your hand feature and we will bring you in for any comments you'd like to make. We do have several attendees. Seeing no one raising their hand to provide testimony. Counsel, do I have a motion? Councilman Cavanagh.
We close the public hearing on the summer 2021 fee schedule.
Mr. Mayor, second motion.
I have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing for the fee schedules. Any discussion on the motion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Next item is Resolution Number 21-2264 regarding that same fee schedule. Counsel, what is your pleasure? Councilman Cavanagh.
Move that we approve Resolution Number 21-2264, adopting the summer 2021 fee schedule.
Mr. Mayor, second motion.
I have a motion, a second, to adopt Resolution Number 21-2264. Is there any discussion on the motion? Councilman Cavanagh.
Another required to bring this fee schedule to us before publishing our rec guide. But just as a side note, I really appreciate seeing what different classes and programs the city's offering. Really excited to see rock climbing be introduced. I think that's going to be something that is going to be really supported by our community and love how our Parks Department is always looking for new and innovative programs to serve our community. So job well done.
Thank you.
Counsel, any further comments or questions? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. And the item is agreed to. Thank you, Jenna. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is a public hearing for Community Development Grant Program substantial amendment to program year 2019 action plan. I'll open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I do have a brief presentation to share with you tonight. It's just a quick overview of what the changes are to our action plan and then moving into the public hearing. So we are here to amend this plan right now. The purpose, the purpose for the amendment is to accept the additional CARES Act funds. And we also want to use a small amount for administrative activities so that we can provide some outreach and identify a year in what the gaps are in services that we're providing and what other funding sources haven't been able to cover yet. We also are using this amendment to increase the funding for public services. So to make these changes or to accept funding, we have to make changes to our action plan. And a quick overview of those changes, basically any area where we talked about our process for community involvement, we updated that to include these pieces. We also included the additional funding in all the appropriate areas. And we updated the funding allocated to public services and including included funding from the CARES Act for admin. So at the time you received your packet, then we only had three public comments. The first one was a really nice feedback, so that it was a well thought out plan. We also received a comment recommending that we don't accept the funding, that this is part of the bigger issue and that we're becoming too dependent on the government. Our overview and our actual action plan has the full comments that were included as well as my response. But if you want to stop me for any questions on any of these, please feel free to do so. And then we also had a pretty good discussion at our last presentation just regarding our ability to spend the funds because it was a little bit difficult this first year to spend all of the funds that we've allocated so far. Since this was sent out to you, we also received one more email. And there were kind of four areas that were addressed in this email. The first one, there was some confusion about the origin of the funding and why we were including it in a PY19 action plan when the CARES Act funds came out in 2020. So I kind of explained that to this person. There was also some concerns that there was funding left over and that we haven't spent it. And they had thought that we were holding back on the funding and not putting all the funding out there to spend. So so I just kind of explained to them that we were trying to spend it. It just wasn't able to get out the door, but it was allocated. They also had some great ideas around incentives for people receiving vaccines that I will forward on to any any partners that we end up having that do mobile vaccine clinics or anything like that. And they also talked a little bit about their frustrations about the mask requirements not being enforced in Meridian. So those were all of the public comments that I've received up to this point. And that final one, that will be included in the finalized plan that you guys will see. So moving forward, our next steps tonight is our public hearing and then we will close the public comment period. On April sixth, I will provide you with the finalized action plan and a resolution for you to adopt it. And then right after that, I'll be able to submit it to HUD. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Crystal. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, I'm in Strater.
Thank you, Crystal. You know, I read through the comments and I think it's important that we're not just looking to spend money, right? So if we identify a need and we're unable to deploy those funds, ultimately what happens to the CARES Act funding?
If we're not able to spend it within the six-year requirement, then it will just go back to the federal government. So it's not like it will just be dissolved within the city budget or anything. We either use it or it's sent back.
Thank you.
Counsel, any further questions or comments? Okay, this is a public hearing. Mr. Corcoran, do we have anybody sign up to testify on this item?
We did not.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to come forward and provide testimony or anybody online? If you're online, if you can use the raise your hand function on Zoom, we can bring you in for any comments. I'm not in the room, so I don't see anybody coming up. And no one on Zoom is raising their hand. So with that, counsel, do I have a motion? Councilman Cavanagh.
Move that we close the public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant Program substantial amendment to program year 2019.
Okay. I have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay?
Mr. Mayor, I haven't voted yet because I think Councilmember Hoagland at least had a question.
I had a question, Mr. Mayor. I was trying to get my microphone unmuted. I just wanted to double check with Crystal. Is comment, are comments still accepted until April sixth? Did I understand you saying that? Or we will vote on April sixth? We're just closing the public hearing and then we'll do the final vote on April sixth.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I want to clarify. Thank you. Sorry about that. I'm an aye, Mr. Mayor.
As am I, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Well, the ayes had it. The public hearing is closed. We will see this back in two weeks for further action. Okay. Thank you, Crystal. All right, moving on. Next item up is a public hearing for Cornerstone Dental H 2020-009. We will open this public hearing with staff comments. I'll turn this over to Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just getting my presentation going. Ready to see it? Awesome. Noted, the first item tonight is for Cornerstone Dental. The site consists of 0.79 acres of land currently zoned CN located at 3250 North Leslie Way, which is approximately a quarter mile west of the Eagle-Eustick intersection. It was annexed in 2002 and then later rezoned in 2005. The applicant is proposing to amend the first addendum of the Champion Park Edition Development Agreement to remove an existing provision of the original agreement, which is part of the addendum. The existing provision of the original DA is still valid because it is attached to the amended one as an exhibit. The existing provision requires that all future commercial uses obtain a CUP, a conditional use permit. The subject site is the last remaining undeveloped commercial property within this subdivision. The property is zoned CN, which is Neighborhood Business District. And the proposed use is a new two-tenant commercial building with the main user being a dentist office. The proposed use of a dental office is a principally permitted use under current development code within the CN zoning district. The existing DA provision specifically points out limiting hours of operation as the reasoning for requiring a CUP. Current development code within the CN zoning district already limits the hours of two 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Staff finds that the already limited hours within the zoning district, in conjunction with the location of the site, to be sufficient for future development and provide adequate evidence to remove the existing provision. In addition to the request for the DA modification, the applicant is requesting a council waiver to reduce the required landscape buffer along the eastern property line from 20 feet to 15 feet to match the existing buffer that is already existing along the east boundary and adjacent to the existing office building to the south. The property to the east of the site is a multifamily development and there are approximately two structures directly butting the site. The reason for the waiver request is to accommodate a wide enough drive aisle that allows two-way traffic and can also meet the fire department access radio. Furthermore, there is only a portion of the required buffer that is actually adjacent to the noted drive aisle that truly requires the reduced buffer, which is really just this section here. The applicant is showing more than the required 20-foot buffer width to be landscaped beyond this area. The, there was no commission action because this is a development agreement modification, so it came straight to council. But staff does recommend approval of this DA modification with the findings and conditions noted in the staff report. And I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Joe. Joe, one question I had, and maybe this is for legal, is by removing this, if there's any redevelopment on the property, does that remove that activity for the entire property in the future?
Mr. Mayor, in relation to requiring a CUP for any new conditional or any commercial use, yes.
Just curious if that would be common practice in the, in a, for a situation like this? Does it, or is a redevelopment likely going to require some sort of future council action should they choose to do it?
Mr. Mayor, future council action would likely be uncommon just because it's already zoned. So we would rely on the underlying zoning to take care of everything and probably do everything through a CCC, change of use, or administrative level changes. Unless it is a use within these zones, which are CN for this property and CG on the southern property, which they do share the parking lot. Unless there's a conditional use within those zones, which from staff's perspective, we are, we are fine with that. We don't see the redevelopment requiring any major actions.
Yeah. I'll leave that to counsel for, to chew on on that value. From that standpoint, counsel, any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Joe, just for clarification, staff's also supportive of the waiver for the buffer?
Counsel and Cavanagh, that is correct.
Mr. Mayor.
That's one of my Strater.
Thanks, Joe. Just wanted to check and make sure that a conditional use permit would still be required for a different type of use. Top of mind would be a nightclub, but that's not a great example. But I just want to make sure that that doesn't stop the need for a future conditional use permit for something that's not permitted specifically under this zoning. Um, specifically under this zoning.
Commissioner, thank you for that. That uh, comment, the, but yes, according to whatever zone it is, if there's a conditional use permit required, then yes, it doesn't prohibit conditionally use permits period, but just removing the provision that any future use would require a CUP. So for example, a dental office that is proposed here, it's a principally permitted use, but because of the provision, they would be required to do a CUP or modify the development agreement to just remove that need since this is going to be the last undeveloped site in the subdivision.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Count, missionary.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, maybe to provide some additional context. It was very common for the city when we annexed these parcels in back in that time period that we required it when there was no development plan for the entire center at the time. So that was a fairly common practice. It's not a very common practice now because most times the council wants a development plan for the um, the commercial area. So you have an idea what's going to be there and then only CUPs are required for the types of uses that require a CUP. So Joe was correct. They, they would still be required for certain types, certain types of drive-throughs where they're located and certain types of things like that. But this was common then, but as Joe said, this is the last piece left in this particular one, and that's why it was probably like that to begin with.
Thank you. I mean, that's probably the question I should have asked is why this would have been put and done in the first place. Tom. Counsel, any further questions? Okay, this is a public, uh, well, I, I will, the next up is our applicant. Um, and we will recognize the applicant. Is it going to be Jessica or? Now, if they're in the room or on the phone, okay?
He's coming up, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Uh, you're recognized for fifteen minutes.
He's bringing up your presentation, then you'll be able to control through once it's shared.
If you can start with your name and address when you're ready, that'd be great.
Um, basically, I'm just here to kind of back up what Joe said. Um, we're just asking for the landscape buffer to be reduced to the fifteen feet. Could you go to the next slide?
Jessica?
Yeah.
Introduce yourself, your name and address.
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm Jessica Petty. I am an architect with twelve fifteen design. And so I worked on the, the site plan and the building for Dr. Tufts new um, building here in Meridian.
Thank you.
Oh, can you go one more? I haven't, there we go. So this, this right here shows the overlay of the existing site um, with our proposed site. So here you can see, um, I guess I can't even just enough, but it, it shows how the landscape buffer, we're just asking to continue it across just to create a straight line um, as to help with traffic flow as well as mainly getting the fire trucks in and out um, of that. And then to, yeah, to keep our, our parking count at the number that works for the uses of our building.
Counsel, is that all, Jessica?
Yes, that's it. Thank you.
Counsel, any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you very much. Uh, this is a public hearing. Did we have anyone sign up to testify in this item, Mr. Court?
Mr. Mayor, nobody signed up in advance or in the room in advance.
Okay, if there's anybody that'd like to provide testimony in the room, please come forward to the podium at this time. Or if you're online and you'd like to provide testimony, please use the raise your hand feature. Bring you in. See, nobody wishing to provide testimony with the applicant. Like any final comments? I'm hearing a nose shaking of heads. Um, with that counsel, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Move that we close the public hearing on item twenty-three, uh, development agreement modification H dash two zero two one dash zero 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 nine.
Okay.
I have a motion second because of public hearings. Any discussion on the motion? If not, on favor, sign by by saying I.
Hi.
Hi.
Oppose name? The eyes have it and the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Move approval of item twenty-three development agreement modification for Cornerstone Dental H dash two zero two one dash zero 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 nine as presented by staff, uh, including the public testimony from the applicant.
Okay.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, court to call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton.
Hi.
Cavanagh.
Hi.
Perro.
Hi.
Straitor. Hogan.
Hi.
All eyes motion carries and the items agreed to. Uh, thank you, Jessica, for being here and good luck on the project. Um, next item up is a public hearing for Ambles Run Subdivision H twenty twenty dash zero one two four. I will open this public hearing with staff comments and turn it over to Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's the Joe Show tonight, so I'll be doing all the projects here. The subject property tonight for this application, Ambles Run Subdivision, consists of two point eight eight acres of land located on Lot twenty-six, Block one of the county subdivision, Dunwoody subdivision. It's approximately a quarter mile east of Locust Grove and a half mile south of Chindon Boulevard. It is at the terminus of Chopin Avenue, which is within the Vienna Wood subdivision directly to the south. So the north is County Residential and an open space lot within the Dunwoody subdivision. To the east is County Residential and one of the homes in the Dunwoody subdivision. To the south, as noted, the Vienna Wood subdivision are for zoning and detached single-family residential. And to the west is an additional county residential lot. There is no history with this property with the city. And therefore they are requesting annexation and zoning in a preliminary plot. As noted, the applicant is requesting the annexation of land with a request for the R two zoning district and a preliminary plot consisting of six single-family residential lots. The property lies within the low-density residential future land use designation, which allows single-family dwellings at a gross density less than three units per acre. The proposed project meets both the allowed use and density requirements of the requested zoning and future land use. The proposed density should function as a transitional density from the Vienna Wood subdivision to the existing Dunwoody subdivision. Staff finds that proposed density as a, as presented is appropriate in addition to meeting our comprehensive plan. Access into the site is proposed via extending Chopin Avenue as noted from the south. It is the only available point of access into the site. The applicant is proposing to provide parkways with street trees along both sides of the Chopin Avenue extension. Due to the size of the subject site being less than five acres, there is no minimum open space requirement. However, staff is recommending the applicant revise the landscape plans to show a ten-foot parkway instead of eight foot to increase the available open space of the project and have wider planar beds that usually provide for healthier trees and you can actually provide larger trees. Writing open space at this level is not required by code, but staff believes it helps the project meet the spirit of the code and allows for even more of an identity for this small subdivision. In addition to the wider parkways, staff originally recommended a revision to the road layout to provide a stub to the western boundary. Staff was hopeful that ACHD would allow a reduced street section for this stub, but ACHD did not allow this. Following decision discussions with ACHD and the applicant, staff discussed with the commission that removal of the recommended layout revision is acceptable. Commission agreed and modified the recommendation of approval by removing the requirement to provide this stub street. The submitted landscape plan also shows a raised berm with relatively full landscaping along the rear of the building lots. It's landscaping on private lots is not regulated by code and therefore staff does not recommend adding any provisions regarding this landscaping. The applicant intends to maintain this berm and landscaped area through the HOA and subsequent CCNRs that the city does not regulate. Staff believes this is the appropriate way to regulate and maintain the proposed landscaping on the private building lots. The commission did recommend approval of the subject applications as noted with the modification of not requiring the stub street to the left or to the west. At the commission hearing, there's a number of public testimony. There's only one item of written testimony for the commission hearing. Key issues of the public testimony was regarding this lot and the Dunwoody subdivision. Um, first, that the lot in question was never properly split from the HOA and does not meet their CCNRs, that the proposed project does not comply with the existing HOA CCNRs and their lot size requirement. And a question of if it is a, an issue for the city to be involved in. The legality of the property split of lots twenty and five and twenty-five to six, I'm sorry, lots twenty-five and twenty-six to create the property currently requesting annexation and preliminary plot. And the potential of working with the future development of adjacent properties to the west and north to limit some of the CCNR issues discussed to include some revisions of the layout. The commission discussed all these points um in depth. And as I noted, they recommended to recommend approval and to strike any conditions regarding the western stub street. As noted, um, in the commission hearing and previous decisions by legal and council and everything that the CCNR issues are a private matter and not a city matter and that they should be discussed in the civil realm and not within the public hearing realm. After that, um, since the commission hearing, there were two pieces of public testimony submitted. Um, one being from the Dunwoody HOA treasurer, which was a rebuttal to the email shown by the applicant. Now, she states that the email is misleading and that Pioneer title was not involved in the sale of the property in question. And then um, Ramona Tippets, who was also noted in an email regarding the Lot twenty-six. And she disputes that the Lot twenty-six was legally split from the HOA and directly rebuts the email shown by the applicant as well. After that, I will stand for questions.
Thank you, Joe. Counsel, any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Thank you, Commissioner. Joe, apologies if, if this was covered in the staff report, but I missed this piece about the, the berm and the landscape um, on the borders. Can you talk me through a little bit? I mean, it's going to be maintained by the, the HOA through the CCNRs, but it's again, as I'm looking at it, it's essentially these potential lots backyards. Can you help me understand what the strategy or how that's going to be achieved?
Councilman Cavanagh, that's a great question. And that is why. Right, well, let me back up. Yes, it, it is on the private lots on the, in their backyards. Because of that, as you know, or as in code, this city doesn't regulate that. You, whatever trees are on your property are on your property. So the city does not want to put provisions in there that are going to require maintenance of it or put an easement or anything like that when it's on somebody's private property. So that's, I discussed with the applicant that they intend to regulate that through their CCNRs. So that should be with their HOA and their CCNRs. And if they end up changing it and removing it, that's on them. Staff doesn't find that this is necessary. This was one way that they were working with the adjacent landowners to try to buffer and screen the properties, considering it's three properties against one, which is amenable. But again, it, city code does not regulate private property landscaping, so we don't want to get involved in that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Let just follow up. We're not requiring this. They've put it on their own plan to demonstrate what they intend to do, but it's not a response to any type of requirement that we've got.
Councilman Cavanagh, that is correct.
Got it. Thank you, Joe.
You are welcome.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perro.
Um, Joe, so can you walk through? So we have an application for um, annexation and zoning in a preliminary plot. If the applicant isn't successful in coming to some sort of arrangement negotiation with, with the homeowners association um, for the lot sizes and or um, you know, there's, there's some scenario that comes to be that this doesn't ultimately work out. Um, what happens with the, essentially can the, does the applicant have an obligation to come withdraw that plot? Or can they just wait for a couple of years and it runs out? Or I mean, like, how will this work with there, there's, it just seems like there's a lot of, um, and, and like you said, the council doesn't have any interest in in anything to do with the CCNRs whatsoever. But my question is, is, it seems like there are a lot of things that are, that are outside of our involvement that the applicant is banking on to make this successful. So what ultimately happens if we, uh, two things? One, if we were to approve the annexation and zoning, but not the preliminary plot until there were more, there was more um definitive circumstances? Or if we were to prelude, approve the preliminary plot, but um, nothing, you know, nothing ultimately comes to be with it would just, would expire essentially?
Councilman Perro, I will probably default to Mr. Nary on a lot of that. Um, I don't want to misspeak, but in short, the the city approving the preliminary plot, as noted, has nothing to do with the existing Dunwoody CCNRs because once they are annexed into the city, they are now bound by our city code and our zoning code, not the old CCNRs. That doesn't mean the old CCNRs go away for the existing subdivision, but just for this property. Um, if a plot is approved and the applicant gets sued, that is outside of the city's control. That is not our purview, but, and that's why I've noted repeatedly that that's a civil issue. The plaque could sit there for two years and if they're part of that legal issue is that the plaque never gets recorded, then yeah, it would, it would die and it'd be done. Um, they could also ask for a time extension and keep working this out. Uh, but again, a lot of that is a civil issue and, and the city should not be involved.
Mr. Mayor, a follow-up?
Councilman Perro.
Um, I looked all through the file and I couldn't find a, a bigger picture map of where, of how this fits into all the surrounding property. Um, is, you know, what's in the northwest to the west? There was some mention of it in the staff report, but I didn't really see anything that, that showed me just the, the parcels directly around it and how this fits in. But um, um, that being said, is the, are the sub, are the properties, the parcels to the north, to the west? Are those um, county subdivisions then? Because you're saying that when, if it were to get annexed in the city of Meridian, then the CCNRs will no longer apply. Is that because the, the parcel is now in the county? I mean, in the cities, excuse me, not in the county?
Yes, ma'am. That is correct. The exist, as you can see on this map here, all of the white means that it's rural urban transition, which is part of the county. So directly to the east and are surrounding it, basically, these are all the Dunwoody subdivision. This is a open space lot that they did a lot line adjustment years ago to reduce the acreage of it. But nonetheless, it's still a legal lot and within the subdivision. Once it gets annexed, then yes, those existing CCNRs from the city's perspective do not regulate development. It's our zoning code and our ordinances that regulate the development. So yes, to your answer, it is county and then it would be part of the city. So that's why the CCNRs would not apply.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Straitor.
I have a question for Mr. Nary. Um, since this is, I, I understand that we're not involved in a civil matter. But I want to understand if, if we do not believe, uh, if, if it is not clear that the basis of the lot split was legal, is the burden of proof on the applicant to show the city that they have a legal basis for annexation and approval or who, how does that play out legally?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, council, that's a great question. So to apply to even do this, they do have to have planning reviewed as well and make a determination it is a legal lot. It can be developed in the city. And we do occasionally run into situations where people bring forward a lot that was illegally split in the county and we will refer them back to the county to fix that problem prior to them being able to even file the application. So it has been reviewed by planning to this point and planning is believes that it is a legal lot split and is valid. Certainly, that's a good question to the applicant if you have that concern. Secondarily, if you look at the, the drawing that's up to the one that's to the left of the aerial is the, a city zoning map. And you'll notice that the first two lots that are adjacent to Locust Grove that are R twos are in the city and they were part of the Dunwoody sub. So we have annexed portions of this sub pri- prior to today uh, for reasons that, you know, were requested back then. So this is not that unusual. The fact there's a dispute is a little bit unusual and they haven't been able to work that out. But certainly, Joe is correct. If we have the, you have the absolute right to annex this and consider it if you wish. You can grant the requested for the preliminary plot. The risk is on the property owner. If the Dunwoody sub believes that they either can't split it off the way they have, that they believed the lot split was illegal or they believe development under city standards would violate their CCNRs and they believe the property owner is still bound by them, that is a civil dispute between them and not the city. It is, as Joe stated, potential that it may hold up the development and if it holds it up long enough, the plaque could expire. Um, I think to answer Councilman Perro's earlier question, could they bring something else differently? The plat could expire. I think to answer Councilman Perro's earlier question, could they bring something else differently back? Well. Again, if they want to develop it based on this layout, they will have to show a development plan substantially compliant with what they've submitted. So they can't come back with two or one when that's not supposed to been approved without the council readdressing it. So because it wouldn't be a substantial compliance. What happens often, as you know, well, I'm sure that in a lot of development, the lot sizes change slightly, you know, eighteen thousand square feet becomes seventeen or sixteen and one becomes nineteen. So that kind of stuff happens a lot and those are the things that make it substantially compliant. But to answer your question, planning believes it's a legal lot. Certainly, that's a fair question to ask the applicant if you have that concern. If you believe as a council that you don't want to be in, you want this all resolved cleanly and that the Dunwoody sub is not objecting to it. You're certainly welcome to not annex it. You're not obligated to annex it either. So. I think that's really, again, a question for the applicant.
Thank you.
Great, and Miss Counsel, just to continue on that, I I may have misspoken in previous meetings as well as in my staff report that the lot split, meaning that twenty-six and twenty-five. Was an issue. Is my understanding that lot twenty-six has existed and there was a lot line adjustment to move the lot line, but that there was no. Split of it. The split is referring to it being removed from the Dunwoody HOA. And meeting those standards. That is my understanding of it. There was a record of survey done. I don't remember the year, two thousand and five, I want to say it might be, I might just be making that up. But that is a legal document showing the lot lines being moved from existing lots that these this lot and the lot directly north were open space lots of the Dunwoody subdivision. That is my understanding, but I again, I do believe that the applicant will speak to that as well.
Council, any further questions for staff? Okay, I'll ask the applicant to please unmute themselves and they say their name and address for the record. They'll be recognized for fifteen minutes.
Hi there. My name is Michael Miller and I'm at sixty-three hundred Tierra Lane, Boise, Idaho. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, great. May I share my screen with you?
Yep.
Thank you.
Be able to share now, Michael.
Okay, thank you. There we go. Did that work? Okay, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members for this opportunity to present our project. To request annexation and a zoning district of R two for six detached, single-family residential lots. As Joe stated and pointed out, this parcel right here is between the Dunwoody subdivision and the Vienna Woods subdivision to the south. This gives a little bit clearer map of where we are. This is the Dunwoody subdivision along this winding road. These pieces to the north and to the west are unplatted. They are rural urban transition. And these neighbors do have a plan to do develop as well. Like Joe said, this parcel right here is an out parcel of the Dunwoody subdivision. Originally, when the subdivision was first platted. Each of these residential lots, as you can see, came with an open space lot behind it. And so the largest open space space lots, not including lot sixteen over here. But our is our property here, lot twenty-six and lot twenty-eight. So these open space lots right here. Were intended to stay with the subdivision for a period of twenty years. And once that period expired, they would be able to be subdivided. And the subdivision in the CCNRs should be as follows, that lot twenty-six and lot twenty-eight, they may be subdivided under the following conditions. One, that is in accordance with the jurisdiction of the governmental entity at the time and that those lots be one acre. And obviously, our lots are not one acre, but we did have a lot line adjustment in two thousand and five, the one that Joe is referring to. Both of these lot open space lots, lot twenty-six and lot twenty-eight were adjusted and point one two acres was taken from lot twenty-six and given to lot twenty-five. And when we spoke with Title about this, because the issue did come up, the issue about the separation of the lots came up. With the Title Company at the time of the purchase and sale of lot twenty-five, which now is held by Dale Hope, titled to lot twenty-five is held by Dale Hope. And lot twenty-six still remains with us. During that sale, the separation of those lots what came to question. And the lot line adjustment was considered by the Title Company, a actual subdivision of that piece. It was satisfied these two pieces. It was subdivided into two point eight eight acres, which is an acre and that it is now a residential lot. You know, when that sale took place in two thousand and nineteen, we actually didn't have a plan for the land. It's just open space right here. We actually offered to sell the land back to the homeowner here, Dale Hope, and offered him to buy it. He declined. We went to the county to just see what we could do. The county won't provide services, as you know, because the property in question is less than five acres. And so they won't allow you to have a well in septic. So in order for any potential homes on the parcel here to be developed, we need services from you guys. And so our initial plan actually was to have eight. Sorry if this is making you dizzy. Our initial plan had eight lots because the contiguous zoning next to us was Vienna Woods, which was R four. So we came up with eight eight lots. We went to Dunwoody first and said, this is our plan. They said, you know, we don't like it. I presented with them an option to de-annex our land to clear up any complications with the CCNRs. They took that de-annexation to vote. They voted no, but they never included us in that vote. They haven't included our piece of land or our us as property owners in a vote for over two years. Now that we're going forward with development, they are pushing back. They asked that we changed our zoning request and decrease our lot sizes or increase our lot sizes decreasing our density. And we complied. We changed our zoning request to R two. These are about half acre lots, as you can see. And Joe explained the plan really well. You know, it's a small, small piece of land. We want it to be a good transition between the two neighborhoods. We've intended a three-foot berm with ninety-six pieces of vegetation on each side. To provide a privacy buffer, the the fence here will be cedar fence. The lots will be we're we're open and appreciative of staff's recommendation for the eight-foot walkway to be extended to ten. Excuse me, parkway. And so we will be happy to change that in our plan to help meet some of those open space requirements. And these are kind of this is an idea of what we have. They're single level homes, at least on the eastern side is close to Dunwoody and we'll be happy to put that into the development agreement. They're going to be on big lots, nice, single level homes, at least twenty-one hundred square feet. We believe there's a good market for this in Meridian. I think there is only sixteen new construction homes sold and above point four acres in two thousand and twenty. Some of these are actually award-winning designs. And so the potential for some really beautiful homes is there on our parcel. The oh, interesting pieces that any there was about twelve hundred that were less than point four acres. So I think that there's a market for what we're trying to do. We also are very aware of the Dunwoodies. You know. They that we we have tried to work with them. We have spoken with them and on many occasions, we decreased our lot sizes. The legality of our lot split is really not for this platform. I'm happy to answer any questions about it to address any any, you know, potential. Concerns, but you know, the burden of proof is on them. We legally split that lot. It's now a residential lot. It needs to get services to be developed. And that's that's our stance. That's Title's stance. If the Dunwoody would like to, you know, pursue those concerns further, we're still open to that. You know, and then the other potential that the commission recommended is that we work with the neighboring developers. And this is sort of an idea of what we have for the entire piece, our piece still being these six lots. But they will get access from Dunwoody up here and we'll exit through Chopin here. And this is sort of the possible future plan. This is a rough draft. This is not, I'm not speaking for them, but this is what we've had in conversations with them. Another point I would like to make is that this parcel, although it was part of Dunwoody at one point, it has no access through Dunwoody. All of the traffic will flow down Locust Grove through Strauss and up through Chopin, ending in a temporary cul-de-sac here until these guys develop. So there will be very little impact on the Dunwoody subdivision. And with that, if, oh, I would also like to point out this, that lot sixteen was a part of Dunwoody as well and lot five. So there is precedence for these lots being separated from the sub from Dunwoody annexed into Meridian and zoned, splitting into various different sized lots. And I think with that, I will stand for questions. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Michael. Council, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perro.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. This was a much, much more helpful than what I what I was able to review in the file. I appreciate seeing. What the anticipated look is of the surrounding properties possibly. And my question then is, I I understand that that you have had conversations with the surrounding property owners and. That you are farther along in your process than they are and did not want to hold up your application until they got to the point that they were bringing theirs forward. And if you can't answer this and they are here in the meeting, that would be really helpful that they could answer it for us. But could you give us an estimate of the timeframe for these other potential applications and is are there different? Different groups that are coming with applications for each of these parcels? Or is it all another collective? Developer that will be working with the other three? So kind of just give us an idea of how your timeline would match up with theirs.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity. They are working together. These each of these homeowners, it's three different parcels. They will be working together. We met with them to discuss working together, but the cost benefit of withdrawing was significant with marginal changes in our plan. But this is sort of the cohesive plan that we came up with recently. If we had withdrawn, they're ready to submit right now. They've already pre-apped. Their intention is to move in right behind us. Our piece right here is integral in any future development because all of the stubbing comes from Vienna Woods right here. And so for them to get access to these utilities, we would have to come in first. So we were continuing to move in first, but. They're ready to go right behind us as well. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Cavanagh.
It was. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Miller, if I recall, one of the recommendations coming from the Planning and Zoning Commission was that you reengage with the neighbors of the Dunwoody subdivision.
Yes.
Just curious if you can summarize what engagement looked like post Planning and Zoning Commission and what maybe summarize the synopsis of the conversation.
We sent emails and we didn't get a response. You know. It it's difficult. We we I grew up on this piece of land here. This is this is our home, you know. We watched Vienna Woods come up and then later when David D designed to do Three Corners Ranch. So. We understand the sensitivity of the Dunwoody subdivision to preserving the feel of their their neighborhood and growth is happening at a really quick rate. And so. You know, it's difficult, I think, for some people, but we went to them first and we've continued to try to communicate with them. We changed our plan based on their request. After commission, the communication just died off. And so we did reach out, but we didn't have much success there. I apologize.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
I'd like to get, Mr. Miller, your reaction to the piece of public testimony from Ms. Tippets, the former HOA president. At least in my mind, it kind of calls into question whether this the lot split legally happened. We like to support our HOAs in general that are in Meridian. You guys were part of an HOA. I mean. Can you give me some reaction to that piece of public testimony that was recently received?
Yeah, so you know, I, like I said, I don't want to, you know, I would, I'm happy to answer all of these questions and go from there. Their. Concerns about the legality of the split, it's it's difficult because we the burden is on them. We stand legally owning that land. There was a conversation, this is a piece of email, prior to the email that she's reboot rebutting. It was in concern with the Title Company. They said that the Dunwoody subdivision said you can't split your lot, you know. And now the Title Company had come to my mother at the time and said, apparently, there are no issues with the CCNR. And so she said that we need to put everything on hold and she'll get in contact with the lawyer. There it's indicated in the CCNRs that lot twenty-six and lot twenty-eight can be subdivided. And so if, you know, if that's possible, then the lot line adjustment, which is a we did divide the land, would satisfy that covenant. And after that, the email came back from the Title Company that apparently Sandy Anderson and Moden Tippets reviewed the CCNRs and realized that you are in compliance. And so now you my reaction is, you know, I I haven't had a face-to-face conversation with her. At this point, it comes like he said, she said, and if they feel like they deserve civil remedy that, you know, we'll happy happily meet them there. We don't want that. But you know, we haven't had an opportunity to discuss the what happened two years ago with this separation of the lots and so on. Does that does that help answer your question?
Yeah, I appreciate your reaction. I guess part of what I'm trying to struggle with is. You know, the city planning staff needs to make a determination. I what I heard from our legal team is that our city staff needs to make a determination that. You have a standing to be annexed into the city.
Sure. Yeah, we do legally own the land. The lot split was recorded with the county. The CCNRs provide that it can be subdivided. There are several pieces that, you know. Support where we're coming from. As a single statement by the old HOA president, it's, you know, I appreciate. That you have concerns about it, but we do stand confident in our position.
So, Mr. Miller, with that, and I don't want to get into, you know, CCNRs, you know, I don't know how much value they are, but. As you you kind of mentioned, the CCNR said you you can develop a one acre lots. But you're not doing that. Do you have it? Is there something I'm missing? Or do you have a viewpoint on? Are you in compliance with that element?
Yes, sir. So the subdivision subdividing of one acre lots was satisfied by the lot line adjustment. Subdividing that parcel into two, because this is originally three acres. And so now it's two point eight eight. And because it was subdivided, it's considered a residential lot and we're looking to further subdivide. And that there is nothing in here that says anything about further subdivision. So.
I guess I guess the heart of my my question, you feel like you're in the spirit of your CCNRs by subdividing down to the level you are? Or legally, you think you're in compliance with the CCNRs because you're subdividing to the further level, the CCNRs don't contemplate?
I we do feel legally and personally that we're doing a service to Dunwoody. The other lot owner to the north here, Monty has spoken with the Dunwoody. He has support from them and his lots here are not. One acre lots either. And his plan here is to do four there as well. Similar in size, a little bit larger, but all the same, the spirit still remains the same.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perro.
My understanding from what Joe presented that once this gets annexed, it won't be subject to the Dunwoody CCNRs anymore. Can we get clarification on that?
Mayor.
Mr. Nary.
Mr. Mayor, members of Council, the city doesn't enforce CCNRs. The issue of dispute between the HOA and their belief that the CCNRs are still applicable to them. Versus the property owners who feel once they're annexed into the city, they don't apply to them. That's a civil issue between them. That has nothing to do with us. So it doesn't apply for our purposes because we don't enforce those. Again, if the HOA thinks it does, then that's what courts are for. That's not what public hearings are for.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Joe.
I just thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to clarify that the legality of lot twenty-six being in existence is not. In question by staff, planning staff has determined that it is a legal lot. I've seen no evidence that lot twenty-six was split from lot twenty-five and created in a new lot. I just want to make that clear. The only split that has become an issue in the public hearing has been the split from the HOA, not a legal lot split. It was it was an existing lot. I just want to make that clear.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Joe, if you could rewind that comment for one second, I guess my question to planning staff is, in light of. The the testimony from Ms. Tippets.
does that change your opinion about the legal basis for annexation? Or do you believe this is still a correct basis for annexation?
Councilwoman Schrader, my reading of that is still in relation to it being split from the HOA. I, I don't know if she was meaning that a lot split that again, I have seen no record of. I have only seen, I mean, it's even in the CCNRs of the HOA, that Lot 26, which is this lot and the 28th, the lot to the north were existing. So I don't see how there could be a dispute that these is a, is not a legal lot. So planning staff does still feel that it is eligible for annexation.
Thanks.
Counsel only further questions for the applicant. Okay. Uh, this is a public hearing. Mr. Clark, do we have anyone sign up to provide testimony on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we do. We have some in person, some online. And starting with in person, first I have Jeff Wilding.
As you come forward and as you are online, if you can state your name and address for the record prior to your testimony, that'd be appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Jeff Wilding. I live at 1842 East Dunwoody Court. And I am the HOA president. Um, a couple of things I want to address really quickly. And I get it, CCNRs aren't part of the city council process. I think that's well established through the, through the discussion tonight. Um, and so we actually have retained some legal counsel and she is going to speak as well. There are a couple of things I want to address though. When we talk, when, when it was, it was mentioned that the lot line was moved. The purpose that that lot line was moved is that the owner of Lot 25, 26 built a shop over the lot line. So he had to move the lot line and he included that, um, in his Lot 25. That's what happened with that split. He talked to the neighbor above and that neighbor above said, you know what? I'll go with you. And so that was all legally done. That does not separate Lot 25 from Lot 26 in ownership. That's what we're talking about. And so recently, when the Hopes bought Lot 25, they did not purchase Lot 26. That would have required an HOA vote to approve that split of lot. And that was never sought. The email that you saw from Mr. Miller from the title company was from Pioneer Title. Pioneer Title did not close Title on that sale. And it's because when they started questioning it, it was quickly moved to Title One. And so Title One is the one that closed on that sale. So we got some smoke and mirrors going here. Those emails that were allegedly provided by Sandy Anderson and Mona Tippett's, again, it says apparently Sandy and Mona said this is okay. Sandy and Mona don't have the authority to do that. It has to go to the HOA. And it was never brought before the HOA at the time. So again, we understand that, that this, uh, is, is not a, a, uh, public matter that, I mean, this is a civil matter for us and we, we are going to take action in that piece. Our intent here, listen, we want the Millers to be able to establish and develop their land. That's why they bought it. We get that. It's very, very clear in the CCNRs that those should be one acre lots. Um, we also, and I think you'll hear, uh, from, from Ms. Pickens, Manwiler, that just because you annex into the city, the CCNRs don't go away. We want them in our neighborhood. They'll have access to our tennis court. Um, and that's about the only amenity we have in that. Um, the email that I believe, uh, uh, Councilman Cavanagh, you asked about any communication or somebody asked about. Um, I did receive an email from the applicant and, um, I, I didn't respond because it was, it was not nice. It wasn't an email that I should have responded to. And so my, our position as a representative of the Dunwoody subdivision is that we hold to our CCNRs. There is, there is space there to build beautiful homes that are just like the ones in Dunwoody. We welcome those people that come into Dunwoody HOA and we would love to, to be able to do that. Um, and so I will yield the rest of my time to, uh, to Terry Pickens Manwiler, um, who is, I believe, online.
Hey, Mr. Clark, I believe this is 10 minutes represented in HOA.
Mr. Mayor, he indicated he had an attorney representing the HOA, so I was holding that time for the attorney.
Okay. Well, let's just put it all into 10 under this. So seven minutes left, roughly, or six.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I have a question before he walks away?
Um, can we let it stop the time? Go ahead.
Sorry about that. Um, could you speak to, uh, the, the, the fact that there are surrounding, um, parcels that are also planning on some, on subdividing into smaller than one acre lots, please?
Thank you. The parcel to the north is, uh, is Monty Moore. Monty, and I know that it was stated that, that the Dunwoody HOA has approved the four lots. Monty hasn't even come to us with a plan. He showed me personally a preliminary plan. What I told him is how could I approve smaller than one acre lots for you? If I'm not approving small, if we're not as the HOA approving smaller than one acre lots for the Miller project? So I, there, it hasn't been approved by the HOA. The two lots that are then to the west of those are not part of Dunwoody subdivision. So they, we, we don't have anything to do with that. We have no governance over that. Does that make sense? And does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogan.
Yes, I, Mr. Wilding, I've got a question for you as well. You know, we're hearing a lot about the CCNRs and lot lines and everything, which, you know, trying to clear through the clutter. I, I want to get, try to get to the heart of the matter. Is it just the fact that if these were one acre lots through this, it would kind of resolve the issue?
Oh.
Okay. That's what I wanted to find out.
Sold. No argument whatsoever.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Since we're, we're asking some questions, Mr. Wilding, I, I did have a question. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding, Mr. Wilding, the summary of your testimony. It's, it's your belief then that staff has erred when, when identifying that this is an annexable parcel of land?
I'm not saying that I don't think it's, I think it can be annexed. But what I, but what, what I'm saying is because it's annexed, the CCNRs don't go away. Perfect. That's all, that's the, what I wanted to make that.
Thanks for serving on HOA board. It's a labor of love. Hope you get doubled your pay.
I keep getting told that. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll, we'll turn six minutes over to, uh, Terry Pickens to continue the conversation on behalf of the HOA.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Terry Pickens Manwiler. I live at three, my address is 398 South Ninth Street, Suite 240, Boise, Idaho. And I'm an attorney at Pickens Law. I represent the Dunwoody Homeowners Association. Um, I do want to clear up a few things that, um, have been said today that in addition to what I provided in my letter of March 11th, that is part of the council record. Uh, first and foremost, there's just a gross misunderstanding about what, um, the staff member Joe keeps saying about the CCNRs go away. They absolutely do not go away. I appreciate that this, in his opinion and through the planning development, that it's a legal lot. It is a legal lot. It's Lot 26 of the Dunwoody subdivision. It can't be taken out of the Dunwoody subdivision without unanimous consent of the Dunwoody subdivision homeowners. And they tried that. They took that to vote with the homeowners and they declined, unanimously declined. Um, so the CCNRs are a recorded instrument. There, they bind the property. Doesn't matter who has jurisdiction over the property, whether it be Ada County or the city of Meridian. The CCNRs are a recorded instrument in perpetuity with the property. So they don't go away. So with, with all due respect, those CCNRs are of importance in what we're talking about today. The reason it is so important is because there is a provision in the subdivision CCNRs that specifically say that any subdividing of lots 25 and 26 or 26 and 28 must be in no less than one acre lots. And I appreciate, um, the applicant suggesting that it already is more than one acre. He's misunderstanding the CCNRs. It specifically says that each of the resulting lots, plural. So whatever lots they are providing in their proposed additional subdivision in the Dunwoody homeowners subdivision can be no less than one acre. So with a 2.8 acre lot, um, that means they can have two residences on that property, two lots. And those lots are still part of the Dunwoody subdivision. They're not part of some random other subdivision. It's not Ambles Run subdivision. It's Dunwoody subdivision. The annexation and calling it Ambles Run does not make it so. The, this was resolved with a plat that was done with Ada County and recorded and approved. You can't undo what the county has already approved just by annexing it into the city of Meridian. What's done is done. What's recorded is recorded. And if the applicant wants to, um, seek a variance with the homeowners association, uh, they can certainly seek a variance. They have not done that. In fact, um, any attempt to talk to the homeowners association at, to this point, um, has been non-existent. Um, the homeowners association has notified them that splitting the property, uh, between lots 25 and lots 26 in ownership did create a problem for the homeowners association because the, Mr. Miller seems to think that by splitting his lot, he gets a second vote. He doesn't get a second vote on the HOA until he is legally split from the Lot 25. So while I appreciate him saying that he hasn't had a say for two years, it's because he split his property without the consent of the HOA. So, you know, it all goes back to just communication and showing up at a homeowners association meeting and trying to work this out. Instead, he's trying to come through the public forum to ram through a plat that will end up in court. You know, the, what I, what I understand with the city of Meridian, I do understand you can annex it and you don't, you, it doesn't really matter what is encumbering the property. What does matter is that if you approve a plat and you go to issue a building permit, the city of Meridian does become involved. Because what's going to happen is a lawsuit is going to be filed and injunction is going to be sought against the city of Meridian from issuing that building permit. So it does become an issue. If the plat sits there and expires, then it sits there and expires because the homeowner can't get this resolved with the rest of the Dunwoody homeowners association. But what an exercise in futility. Because if the plat is approved with six subdivision, subdivided lots, and they call it Ambles Run, a lawsuit will be filed. And, you know, it may take two years to get through the process. The plat may expire, but what if it doesn't expire? And then the plat is no good. And then they have to come back and do the whole thing all over again. So it just seems to me that while the city may benefit from annexing it in, so the services can be provided to that portion of the Dunwoody subdivision, it certainly doesn't make sense to call it the Ambles Run subdivision, approve a six parcel plat when under no circumstances is the HOA going to agree to that. They've already been asked about that and they unanimously declined. So with, with respect to the, um, the status of the HOA, the Idaho Supreme Court has weighed in and said that subdivision homeowners associations have the ultimate authority to make a determination about what is built within their CCNRs. And that isn't, that isn't just a little authority. It's ultimate authority, unlimited authority for the HOA to make that determination. The city of Meridian can certainly approve a plat, but they can't issue building permits when those are going to be tied up in court. The, uh, the homeowners association is an organization that is recognized under law as an organization that gets to mandate what happens on that property because of the recording of the CCNRs. So, um, with all due respect to staff, I appreciate that, um, that he thinks that the CCNRs are just going to magically go away when annexed. They're not. And if, uh, if the six parcel plat is approved, it will end up in court. I mean, that's just the sad truth. And I don't want to sound terse about that. But, you know, we've tried to work with the homeowner. We've told them that they're in violation for splitting and trying to do this. And, you know, there are better ways than trying to ram it through a public process and then try to get a judge to ratify it later. When, in this particular case, the Idaho Supreme Court has weighed in and said the HOA has the unlimited authority, not the homeowner, not the property owner. So with that, I'm happy to stand for questions. Um, I think I've addressed the major points like Mr., um, like the president.
Terry, you, that's your volume.
I don't know how I got muted. I wasn't even touching my computer. Oh, um, the, uh, if the subdivision were proposed for two acres, two one acre lots, we wouldn't be having this discussion. I wouldn't be objecting. The homeowners association would be right in line. But that's not the, the status of the application. So with that, the homeowners association must object to the application and ask that it not be, um, approved, um, because it's not, it's not in compliance and it will be challenged. Thank you.
Also, any questions?
Mayor.
Councilman Hogan.
Question, uh, Ms. Pickens, I, I just, uh, I like to say I get to the heart of the matter, but, you know, I got to keep things simple, simple minds, simple ideas, simple things. So I'm trying to understand when we talk about properly split, we can say legally split, whatnot. It sounds like from the city perspective, there are documents and records and filings, whatever, somewhere that shows two separate lots. And, and I guess that's a question for Joe to respond. So I guess part one of my question, Joe, is that how the city looked at it? There's two legal lots sitting there. Is that correct?
Councilman Hogan, that is correct. Yes, that there are two legal lots and, um, maybe Mrs. Perkins could, I don't know if it's a wording thing, but maybe the split that she's referring to is the ownership split, which again, has come up repeatedly that that's the issue, not necessarily the physical land split because that was already an existing lot.
Right. Okay.
Yes.
That's where I'm getting at, Ms. Pickens, is then, then your part is, were they properly split according to the HOA CCNRs? And that process that you have in place to allow that to be split and be part of the Dunwoody subdivision? Right now, you're just recognizing one lot. Is that correct?
So actually, Councilwoman Hogan, thank you for the question. No, we're actually recognizing two lots. There are two lots, 25 and 26. The challenge that we have with the lot itself, Lot 26, is that the ownership was not supposed to separate for it to be additionally subdivided without HOA approval. So it is a separate lot. We're not challenging the legality of Lot 26. We're challenging whether or not Mr. Miller and his family are the, are homeowners association voting members because they split their lot. They don't get two votes and that's what they're trying to do. They have to come before the HOA and get approval for the property division for the property owners. It is meant to be an open space lot.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yes.
Counsel only further questions. Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Clark, I'll turn it over to you for our next person testify.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next is Dale Hope. Um, Mr. Hope is yielding, so we have Marissa Price. And I'll bring her into the meeting from online.
If there's anybody else online that'd like to provide testimony and you have not signed up, you can use the raise your hand feature so we can bring you in at the appropriate time.
Can you hear me?
We can. If you can say your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, thank you. My name is Marissa Price. Uh, I'm at 2296 North 20th Street, um, in Boise. And I just want to speak, I guess briefly to the fact that, you know, we really understand, Michael Miller and I, I'm sort of co-pilot on this project, but he's really taking the lead, that, um, any project like this doesn't happen in a vacuum and it is really something that is, uh, the pro, uh, that, that comes to fruition because of a sort of a process of collaboration. And we really have worked as diligently as we understand how to do to bring together the parties, uh, that are affected, uh, to a common understanding about what the future land, the land use is of this, of this parcel. Now, obviously we have some, some hot new takes on this, but I do think that we are all more acutely aware at this point, 12 months into the global pandemic, that there are often shifts in circumstances that are unforeseen and that we have to sort of adapt to in their wake. And when the CCNRs were initially drafted, I don't know that it was initially considered that we would have this sort of jurisdictional overlap potentially with a parcel that doesn't have, uh, services from the land from which it was initially connected and needs to be serviced by another entity such as the city of Meridian. And those, uh, it was our understanding initially in talking with Meridian that, that, that a parcel under five acres could not be divided into one acre parcels. And so, uh, so our parcels being 3.3 acres could not be divided into one acre lots when we approached Meridian initially. So that's why we have, you know, initially approached with our four to do eight lots. You know, initially approached with our four to do eight lots and then revised our plan downward to make a better transition, we think, between. Dunwoody and Vienna Woods subdivisions. And we. Understand that there's a civil process for the unwinding of these particular details, but I just want to underscore that from our point of view, we uh. You know, have, have tried to be good neighbors and when we uh, and. You know, left the planning and zoning process and, and were taking a beat to reach back out to this, to the HOA and also to the. Property uh, developers around us. While we didn't ultimately alter our plan because the, the details were. Relatively nominal, we did have a chance to strengthen those relationships with the. We, property owners around us and we feel like, at least in that regard, we fostered a spirit of working forward. You know, together with a common aim of progressing and improving the land. Um, we feel like our modest plot offers a solid diversity of development for Meridian as a whole and meets a need in our marketplace. As well as provides both good transition and conformity between Vienna Woods and Dunwoody subdivisions. We have worked to be good neighbors and to be forward focused and to proceed in a spirit of collaboration and cooperation. And we believe, and we believe that precedent, you know, stands that uh, the future of this land is with Meridian. And that the future of the adjacent parcels is with Meridian as the past of, of some of those additional parcels is also now with Meridian. And we respectfully submit, I suppose, that, you know, you uh, proceed and accept our par- our parcel. And we can resolve any other matters elsewhere.
Council, any questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, next we have Dick Price.
Surprise, if you can unmute yourself and say your name and address for the record.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, okay. I've lost my, um, anyway, I'm one of the owners of the parcel. We bought that property, I think, in nineteen nine. And you know, when we bought it, I understand the one acre deal um, for that lot development. Bought that, you, you could look back thirty years ago. I think the population of Meridian was probably three thousand. But now, um, when we tried to develop it, um, there really isn't. A, a market for a one acre lot. The cities, as they grow, they need to have their density so people can, you know, move in. So we thought. Half acre lots, which are really almost a rarity still, are a very good fit. We work with homeowners. I talked to Dale. I sent him an email, you know, I, he spent a lot of money on his home. I love uh, Dale. He's a great guy. His, his daughter is my next door neighbor. I, I want to be the subdivision to be a good neighbor to him because he'll be the most impacted by it. So we want only single level homes or single levels with a bonus room. Uh, we want, we want looks out his backyard to see privacy and not see homes. So anyway, that's all I had to say.
Thank you. Council, any questions? Thank you very much. Mr. Cork, do we have anybody else sign up to provide testimony?
There is nobody signed up or raising their hand online. I'm looking in the room if there's anyone else. Oh, we do have one more hand online. Next we have Tucker Johnson. I'm bringing him into the meeting now.
Good evening, members of the council. Uh, my name is Tucker Johnson. Address is three seventy two South Eagle Road in Eagle. Uh, I, I am working with the adjacent three uh, landowners, the two five acre parcels to the west. And Monte Moore, uh, the lot, the parcel to the north. And uh, as this was indicated by, uh, or a question was raised by someone on the, on the council, I think it was council member Pearl. Um, we are, and Michael referred to this earlier, we are prepared to submit an application. Uh, forthrightly after uh, this, this hearing tonight and whatever is resolved. Um, the concept that was, that was on your, uh, displayed on your screen earlier is the conceptual draft of what we have. The, the heart of the matter is, is how it can be resolved between the Millers, uh, the Mon- Monte Moore and the, the Dunwoody CCNRs. Uh, so we're, we'll take our cue based upon what happens if, if there's legal, legal matters there. We may not be, be able to submit anything until we can. Come to a meeting of the minds, um, which I think we, there's an opportunity to. Um, but uh, if there's a question relative to that pending application, it is something we've been working on for months, if not. Actually, almost a year now, but these issues and uh, nuances relative to Dunwoody. Uh, and so forth, and Miller's desire for uh, uh, you know, this or that has uh, been part of the whole mix. And so we're, we're, we are getting close, but we just have to wait till we see what the resolution is here tonight, the direction uh, that is identified.
Hey Greg, just wanted to circle back on that Q three forecast and try and land the plane from a KPI standpoint.
Mr. Price, you're, you're muted, or you're not muted anymore. Um, council, any questions, Ms. Johnson? Okay, thank you very much. Um, is there anybody else in the room that is looking like they want to provide testimony?
Mr. Mayor, nobody in the room, just watching online for one last moment. Believe we've gotten everybody.
Okay, then I will turn this over to the applicant for ten minutes for final comments.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, and thank you, council members. Um, yeah, I mean, there's been a lot of talk about it. The HOA um, hasn't pursued any legal remedy uh, until between the Planning and Zoning Commission and this hearing this evening. The separation, the legal separation of ownership happened in twenty nineteen. Um, the title companies, both Pioneer and Title One, were in contact with the HOA at that time. Uh, about separately, it had to be clear, they had to get pro rations from the title, uh, from the HOA to um, transfer title. And um, you know, they've had two years to dispute the legality of the separation of our lots. And now it's coming up here as we come to try to develop. Ultimately, we really just want to put six beautiful homes there. If we need to further that discussion, we're open to that as well. Um, the um, matter about voting in the HOA, uh, I don't, I, I'm not sure that uh. The separating of our lots means that we don't get a vote in the HOA. So if we, we're a part of the HOA, then we become voting members of the HOA or we don't. Um, again, those issues are outside of this realm, I believe. What we have before you tonight is six. Single level detached family homes on about half acre lots. Uh, if you feel that we need to further that con- con- conversation. Uh, we're open to that as well. Uh, we appreciate your time. Uh, it's been a long public hearing on this matter. So, thank you.
Council, any final questions?
Mr. Mayor.
That's what I'm holding.
Yeah, question, Mr. Miller. Um, reason for not having uh, four houses on, on those as opposed to, to six? Is it just the, the development cost and those types of things? What? Making a compromise to four? I know you've, you've gone down from eight.
Right.
To, to four is, is, can you give me a reason?
Uh, a reason as we wouldn't, why we wouldn't go down farther?
Yes.
Uh, you know, the, the eight, the eight lots was, um, we were assuming that the, our best option to annex into Meridian was R four zoning. And so that, that's just where we started. They asked that we decrease it, so we went down uh, by two more lots. Um, you know, we felt like that was a good amount. They're half acre lots. There's only been like sixteen of those in new construction the last year. Uh, if the council feels that maybe we should decrease the lots on the eastern border and if the HOA is amenable to that. To, to lots, that's something we're open to. We don't, we're not ramming anything through here. It's just a piece of land, the highest and best use is residential development. It's a legal lot. It's open for annexation. It, it just needs services. Um, and we want to put some beautiful homes up there and we want honestly for those homeowners to come into a situation where everybody is happy. Uh, that's where we stand.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
I have a question for staff, uh, for Joe. Um, Joe, is there anything that prohibits the city from annexing in? Two lots on this property that are a little over an acre each? Is there anything that would? Stop the applicant from moving forward um, on that basis?
Someone feel like they're trying to say something?
It's me.
Okay, Ms. Terry.
So, um, councilmember, so member, Mr. Mayor, is the council, councilman Schrader, you don't have an application for a two lot subdivision before you. So you can't approve that. You cannot approve the plat that's before you and annex the property with the direction of what you'd like to see. So you can do that. But you can't approve it for two lots since you don't have any application with two lots on it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Yeah, I understand. I, I guess what I was trying to respond to there, one of the um, folks testifying stated that. Um, the sole reason that uh, an application wasn't brought before us in compliance with the CCNRs. Wasn't brought was at the direction of, uh, my interpretation of what they were saying was that planning staff had directed them that there needed to be a certain amount of density. I just want to have planning staff confirm or let us know if they're giving direction that there needs to be a certain minimum density to be annexed. Into the city of Meridian.
Councilman Schrader, thank you. Um, I don't know where that came from. It was not from my mouth, at least from what I remember. Um, I have only been at the city for fifteen months, so maybe some discussions happened prior to that. Um, but no, there's not a minimum density, um, more than zero. That's about it. Um, I, it has to be under three, which they are, but no, uh, whether it's eight. Ten, whatever meets the density, the city is going to review that. Um, six seems like a nice middle ground there, but that's, other than that, there is no minimum.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, question for, continue with Joe.
Yeah, Joe, uh, just question, you know, they're, they're requesting an R two zoning and as we know, the number doesn't correspond to, that means. Two houses, you know, this is, this allows a range of housing and it could be two. In this case, they're asking for six, which is well within the range. And I was trying to think, it, does it go up to eight? Or R two, what, I, I, I just can't remember.
The zoning?
Yes, for that particular zoning.
The minimum lot size is twelve thousand square feet.
Twelve thousand, okay.
Which there above.
So I, I guess what I'm getting at, if, if we allow an R two zoning. They, and, and they come forward with six single family residential lots within that approved zone. I, I can't think of a reason to say, no, you're not in compliance. Is that correct?
Councilman Hogan, from the city's perspective, yes, and that's the big issue here, but. And I, I apologize for misspeaking for the lawyer uh, that spoke on behalf of the HOA. The CCNRs do not go away, but it is not a city issue to discuss those CCNRs and whether they comply or not. It should not be part of this decision in the realm of whether or not R two zoning and city Meridian zoning. Um, is the determining factor. But again, that, if that's how the HOA feels and there's some law that's well above my pay grade. That's for the civil side of it, not the city side. So that's what I mean by they go away. In the realm of the perspective of the city, we will not and do not regulate CCNR, so we're not taking that into account. When it comes to reviewing the project, it'll get annexed in and they'll get developed per the zoning code.
Thank you, Joe. That was, I guess, the point where I was going with this is the fact that if we annex and approve the zoning of R two. There is within the city's authority to say, yes, you can build X amount of houses within that, uh, that, that zone. So I, I, you know, unless there's agreements and different things that we enter into that are, are done. It just kind of puts us in a difficult position because we don't enforce the HOA, the CCNRs, and that's not our, our matter. I guess the, the best thing is if everyone would come to an agreement somehow to, to make it work for everybody and, and, and I know the next hearing that we have up. Those folks would love to have half acre lots behind their house. So, and, and, and I completely understand, um, on rural property at one time and we now own an acre and the subdivision came in. And we have smaller lots and they aren't even half acre, but it was nice when we have two houses behind us instead of three, but. You know, so I completely understand that, that feeling of, hey, we want to have that match here. But at the same time, we have been having a lot of this issue out in our more rural parts as development comes in. And trying to make the best decisions possible of, okay, make those single story to help mitigate and do these different things. So. Yeah, these are, these are never easy for anybody involved, so.
Mr. Mayor.
That's my word.
A clarifying question for the applicant. Everyone's in agreement that, that lot twenty six is um, within the bounds of the CCNRs. Is that correct? The, the property of lot twenty six is encompassed by the legal description of the CCNRs.
Yes, sir, that's correct. Um, we also, the, the CCNRs provide for a subdivision, subdividing of that lot. And, and we believe that the title's uh, position is that that lot was subdivided into two point eight eight acres, which satisfies the one acre subdividing.
So, Mr. Mayor, just a couple of follow-up questions. So. Reference, the reference from uh, Ms. Pickens Manwiler's letter to lot twenty six, section five point one three of the CCNRs. References, uh, lot twenty six of block one is being a particular lot, which has some. Parameters that govern its ability to be split. Is that part correct?
Uh, yes, sir.
Okay. And that five point one three parameter, at least. Uh, it reads that that lot twenty six, which is a lot before us. Um, could be subdivided if approved by the city and if the resulting lots from that subdivision are the one acre.
Okay.
Okay, so here's the, here's the question. If we went down the, the court route, if. The city certainly has the right to annex it and approve the plat. And the city not beholden to the CCNRs is, has been discussed, but um. How do you respond when, and again, this isn't directly the city's concern, but it was referenced. When annexation plat's approved, you go to pull the permits, the, the HOA files a suit. Ask for an injunction and says you have real property that for better or for worse, you've elected to impose upon yourself. Additional limitations on its ability to develop. And one of those additional limitations is much more narrow than what the city would allow. And that is one acre or bigger lots. For better or for worse, that's a private contract. That your property is subject to, which is outside of our purview. So in light of that private contract. They then prevent the city from pulling, issuing a building permit. While it would be lawful for us to annex and approve a plat, you very well may be stopped from ever building anything smaller than a one acre lot. Which then very well may lead you to a plat modification application in several years. So.
Right.
That, to cut to the chase, what would you, how do you respond to that seemingly insurmountable problem to your plat?
Um, so this uh, section that provides that lot twenty six could be subdivided. Uh, we believe that that subdivision has been satisfied, that it used to be three acres. It is now two point eight eight, and this is what we got and, you know, from the title, uh, legal team at Title. So the provision for subdivision has been satisfied. The lot is larger than one acre. It's two point eight eight acres. And that we would be subdividing it further. But to answer your question, that probably what you're getting at is we, we don't want to go to. A legal position with, against the HOA. We would prefer to work something together. As you can see from the other development plan, the other neighbor has a plan for less than one acre lots. Uh, there's precedence for it. We're not, you know, we're doing half acre lots. We think that that's a good fit. Um, go ahead, sorry.
Uh, that, the, Mr. Mayor, this. I'm just trying to understand where, where I think this could go. Um, I don't disagree with the appeal of what you're doing. I just, I share that concern that you'll never get a chance to get it built because you. I just, I share that concern that you'll never get a chance to get it built because you may be enjoying from doing so.
Yes, sir.
If, if the, the division you described was the single division which satisfied that condition, the concern is, I mean, if, for example, you applied and wanted 20 lots on this parcel or 30 lots, you know, would you still be able to make the, the claim that the prior division was the single division that had to be satisfied? And now that you've done that, you could put 40 lots on it.
Sure, I mean, that, that we wouldn't do that, maybe. But ultimately, we do feel confident that that position, that the covenant about the subdivision has been satisfied. But we want to provide a good transition between Vienna Woods and Dunwoody. I mean, again, we were there when Vienna Woods was built up around us. And they asked, and we asked Vienna Woods that they do half acre lots. And so the current HOA asked us that we do one acre lots and we're complying with that as well. You know, the actual stickler, the one acre lot restriction in the CCNRs, it was, it's there, it's legal, it's written, it was written 30 years ago. We believe that the half acre lots is a good meeting ground at today's, in today's and where we are today with development.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you.
But, I don't have any other questions.
Council on the other questions. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So Council, I guess you're gonna want to leave the public hearing open for a few minutes. And that there will likely be communication with several people as we move forward.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Board.
Go ahead.
Now, I say, I have a lot of comments and viewpoints on this one, but I'm gonna let you all talk it out first. So go ahead, Mr. Board.
Mr. Mayor, it is, at least it starts at first blush as a relatively, relatively, you know, straightforward, small parcel infill, R2 development. That it just checks the box in a small infill project that, that seems to be appropriate to proceed. That elephant in the room is the one I focused on at the end is whether or not if an annexation in this plat gets, were to get approved, whether or not this plat ever gets a building permit is not something that we comment on and address in direct, understandably so, but it is out there. So the applicant is well aware of that risk, is getting well aware of the conflicting interpretations of what the CCNRs may or may not limit. Again, that's outside of our bounds. So putting that aside, the, the zoning and the plat itself, it seems appropriate, it does seem to fit. I don't, I don't have any overwhelming concerns other than the real potential for litigation to try and resolve this conflict and in the private contractual limitations on its use.
Mr. Mayor.
That's my Strater.
So I look at this maybe slightly differently. I think we have a little more latitude with, you know, looking at an annexation. And to me, it's not serving the city's interests to approve a development that there is a question about the legal basis of annexation or where there would be pending litigation. And potentially, we could become a party to it. I also think there's an issue, not the looming issue, but there is an issue with kind of stepping over an HOA when the common sense reading of the CCNRs is a one acre, is developable, you can subdivide to one acre. Seemed really straightforward and I, I have concerns about stepping over an HOA in their role there. So I'm unlikely to approve this application tonight for those two reasons. I don't think it makes sense to do it. I think this development's great. I hope they can come to an understanding with the HOA. I think anything we do to approve this one is sort of just aiding and abetting something that needs to be resolved outside of this forum.
Mr. Mayor.
That's one pro.
I guess I'm taking maybe a I don't know, different, but bigger picture view of this, and that is, do we want this parcel to be a part of the city? Do we want to provide service to this parcel? You know, is this, is this good for our community in that sense? And I don't, you know, I have concerns more about do we obligate ourselves to provide services to this parcel when there's a possibility it will sit vacant with no activity on it? And, you know, my preference, of course, with the annexation is that service be provided to that, that property within, specific to water and sewer within the timeframe that the applicant intends. But in this situation, the timeline is very nebulous because we don't know what will work out with the surrounding parties. I don't think that there is a monetary concern there for the city. That's not what I'm trying to communicate. I just, I guess I'm wondering the point of annexing it right now, if we anticipate there will be challenges with even getting the, you know, in addition to approving the plat with, with even the possibility that, that it's going to move forward. So I just saw Councilman Borton give a little smile, so I'm curious now if he has some additional thoughts to what I shared or or what. So that, that's, my thought is, is, you know, it just seems like to me this isn't the time yet. I'm not in opposition to it in terms of, I thought the design was fine. I feel like they met what they needed to meet as far as our requirements were concerned. I appreciate that they are working with, felt, very much appreciate they're working with the, the surrounding property owners that are, that are still in the county to the west. That's something that we're always encouraging our residents and applicants to do is to work together to create cohesive development, and I appreciate that very, very much. So my, my decision, I'm still curious to hear what other council members have to say, still chewing on it a bit.
Mr. Mayor.
That's the camera.
Councilmember Borton hit the nail on the head, and that's that infills are, are never easy, even when you think again, a less than three acre R2 project again, seems like a no-brainer. I appreciate the, the testimony from the public tonight, and I really appreciate the deliberative comments from my previous council members. I'm inclined to be supportive of, of this project for a couple of reasons. One, I, I think it's, the, the legal element is, is not an issue I think that we need to involve ourselves with at this particular point and juncture. I worry a little bit about the claims of legal involvement with the city being weaponized in the future from other less neighborly members of the public like we have here tonight. I appreciate the, the dialogue tonight has been really respectful. The other piece is, and I think Councilmember Strater brought up a, a good question about the need, or maybe it was, is Councilmember Pro about the need for, for these homes. I actually think that we do. I think that, you know, we talk a lot as a body about diverse housing. And this is technically a diverse housing product. There's not a lot of it out there. It serves a need for our community in a highly desirable part of our community. Frankly, I think some of the questions that would always come before us, about what they're doing to mitigate the impacts of, of an annexation around their neighbors, they did proactively. I think, again, limiting one section of them to single family, those are things that I think that in the past we've asked of applicants to help mitigate the impacts of growth. So I tend to be supportive of it. Although I, I appreciate Councilmember Borton's analysis, I'm not quite sure if building permits will ever get to the point of being issued. But I think in terms of being supportive of an annexation, the preliminary plat, I see no reason to be in opposition.
Mr. Mayor. Yeah, this is right, trying to get that to the heart of the matter, as I mentioned earlier, was, okay, let's, what are the, what are the basis fact here? The lots are legal, what's before us is appropriate. Completely understand the difference of how we're looking at it from a legal perspective of can they be annexed, can they be zoned versus are they under the CCNRs? And, and get that, and that is yet to be resolved. And Councilman Cavanagh said something that, that I, I agree with from the standpoint that R2, well, we, we, we just don't see many R2 applications coming before us. It's just the cost of land, the cost of development. I see the National Home Builders Association said the cost of housing just by lumber alone in the last six months has gone up by $24,000. It's just one of those economic things that we're facing. We're in an area of high demand, high growth. We're looking for ways to, to meet the housing needs of people in a way that's affordable. So any other, this is like, wow, R2, this is fantastic. But I, I understand the arguments from the, the HOA and the folks who live there that they, their preferences, they want, they want acre lots, and that was what was agreed to. I, I, and I'm holding out hope that if we approve this and it moves forward, it's R2, there can be, as I, you know, discussed with our, our our development officer earlier, the fact that there's a range within R2. There are things that can be worked out, and it doesn't have to be what it is. Those things can be modified. And, and I just, I hate putting people in the position that, yeah, go to court and resolve this. No, that's not being good neighbors. Somehow, some way, I would like to see this resolved in a way that the city can can make that happen with a, a new plat that comes out and everyone's in agreement. I do think in some ways, the, the homeowners tried to mitigate some of the things with single-story, a berm, doing some of those things. But at the same time, I also know if, if this domino goes, the next ones are likely to follow it in that manner. So hopefully, the discussions, there would be avoidance of going to court to, to resolve those issues, but working it out in a way that everyone that follows can agree with and things get worked out. But I, I with, with a couple of the my council members, I, I agree, this is, this is something that fits the city. A half acre lot is, is great. And, and it's, it's certainly won't have trouble selling. And, but it, it, it does give me pause that there's opposition to that and it's understandable. Not disparaging that in the, in the least, it's, it's legitimate. So it's just one of those things that hopefully we can see some things happen in the interim if this moves forward tonight. So that's, that's where I stand.
Well, unless someone abstains, I won't be voting tonight under the scenario, even though it's, it looks like it'll be a close vote either way, but I'll always share my viewpoint for your further consideration, Council. And, you know, I, I look at it from a, from several different angles, and I'm gonna take it down to the most base level. And, and, and that's the, when you buy your property, you do your due diligence. No matter when you buy it, no matter, no matter what you do from that standpoint. And when I look at this from a standpoint of nothing gets more local than in your HOA, than your home. You know, we talk about federal, we talk about state, we talk about local. Well, there's layers underneath local government that takes it down to the HOA level, though many of us belong to. And when we purchase a home, we agree and sign off onto those CCNRs as part of our understanding, our diligence, our roles, our responsibilities from that standpoint. And to be in a position, right or wrong, to ask the city council to make an affirmative action, which we understand will likely trigger a lawsuit amongst homeowners, because, you know, I'm with Councilman Strater, a non-legal reading of that language states that these should be one acre lots within that, within that subdivision, in my non-legal opinion. But that's my reading of what I read, not that you can be further subdivided down to another level. And for us to take an action that would affirmatively put neighbors against neighbor in a lawsuit that is clearly contemplated. I think there's a difference between going through an action and understanding that you may have a lawsuit that's filed because of actions the city takes that may or may not be deemed as legal or other things that, you know, you're right, we can't be beholden to legal threats that we should or shouldn't do something. But at the same time, should we do something that we clearly can see that there is a valid legal argument that we're basically gonna put these neighbors into that situation, in my opinion? So I'm not in support of, of this action at this time in this fashion. I think there's more work to be done. I'm concerned about the conversation that was shared about what activity occurred between planning and zoning and city council. Was there any real conversation between people? Was there an email sent that was, that should be viewed as non-responsive by the HOA in terms of how it was articulated? I don't know, we didn't see, didn't see it from that standpoint, but you know, if we're, if we're gonna be neighbors and live next to one another, you would like to think that there's other ways to solve these type of issues. And so it would, it would be my viewpoint to not move this project forward at this time and have further dialogue amongst everybody to the point to find a resolution. Because this does not appear to be the resolution that's gonna win out long-term for the residents or for the city, in my opinion. So, thanks for hearing me speak.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
Just to follow up on that, and you know, you know, what I heard from the applicant when we were questioning him later, after all the testimony, and it sounded like to me there was room for compromise when he said, well, maybe two on the side of, you know, the development where Dunwoody's located. I mean, to me, that indicates there, there is some ability to to have some further dialogue. And, and that would certainly be welcome. Now, I don't know if we push that dialogue by approving. You know, it sounds like the vote's maybe there, or as you suggest, and Councilman Cavanagh might wander into this, and that's, you know, do we continue and allow a little more dialogue to see, can we come to something that works for everybody? Avoid costly litigation and have, have, have a good, good neighborly discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I appreciate those comments, Councilmember Hogan. Honestly, I think that's what was intended by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I can't speak to emails that were sent and how they were perceived. But we are, we are a neighborly community where we try to work together as neighbors and try and come to a consensus. So there's been good dialogue from my council members. Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your comments here tonight as, as well, and I definitely gave them a lot of heart and a lot of attention. I'd be supportive of, of continuing this for a couple of weeks and asking the applicant and the president of the homeowners association, get breakfast, have a cup of coffee, be neighbors. Talk through this. If, if there is a, a way to come together and solve this as neighbors first, before the courts, man, let's do that. If, if we can't, well then, the council can come back and render a decision, thumbs up or thumbs down, and you can all go forth. I think that's, that's how I like that we do things in Meridian, so I'm supportive of that.
Mr. Mayor.
That's one pro.
Like I mentioned, I do, I do think that, that, yeah, there definitely needs to be some time given to work some things out. And I, I guess, for me, the piece that's been missing is what really truly what the reasoning is that the HOA has for the objection. Is it just that they, that they're wanting to hold true to their CCNRs and they're just so staunchly stuck on that issue? And if so, are they regulating all the rest of the CCNRs? issue, and if so, are they regulating all the rest of the CC, I mean, is, is, are they going to the letter of the law in every element of their CCNR documents? I'm, I'm a real estate broker, I read these CCNRs all the time. It, it's, to me, I, I, I'm guessing, and I should, I'm not speaking for them, but I'm guessing based on my years of experience that, that this HOA isn't regulating every single member of their, of their neighborhood on every letter of that, of that set of covenants. So I'm, I just, I guess I'm struggling with understanding what it is specifically that they are trying to prevent or trying to, I'm not saying that they don't have a right to to enforce their CCNRs. What I'm trying to get at is what is, what is the concern, the primary concern that they have? Is it, they think it's too dense, they're concerned about traffic? They're concerned, I mean, I guess I'm still not 100% clear on what it is that they have the primary concern about, that they would not be willing to have this conversation with Mr. Miller, so if you know, maybe I just completely missed that, and, you know, I thought I was listening this whole time, but I guess I'm just really still not understanding why, what is so important about this, that they're willing to take legal action and spend those funds that, that they think is gonna be so so like, so, what's the word? Detrimental to their community?
No. All I guess says what I heard, the HOA present state was lot, lot size, which equals density. If it was over one acre, they wouldn't be in this situation. That's what I heard. I'm not gonna say that they won't be further open to other things, but that, am I the only one that heard that, or is anyone here something different, but that's what I heard?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
If this matters is continued to indicate certain to allow these conversations to occur or conclude, I would ask that the applicant provide the applicant's legal analysis on how that section 5.13 of the CCNRs has either been previously satisfied or no, or doesn't limit their ability to develop as presented by the HOA. Ms. Pickens-Manwiler made the HOA's perspective very clear. And it would be very helpful to understand the source of the applicant's confidence that the one acre private contract limitation in the CCNRs will not come back and bite them should something get approved. That would be very helpful for an ultimate decision if this gets continued.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
I'm, what a great suggestion, Councilman Borton, I couldn't agree more. You know, it's sort of feeling like the city could be heading into a situation that might not end in our best interest. Maybe to hear the opposing legal view that there is that basis or not. I, I'm okay with a continuance if that's where we're going. Would love it if they, you know, I know that's what planning and zoning tried, feels like people didn't take that step, but certainly encouraging everybody to try to compromise and well, let's see what happens. It's happened before, we've seen some magical outcomes when neighbors have talked to neighbors and worked it out, so let's, fingers crossed that that'll happen here. Thanks.
And I'd also like to say, Mr. Borton, I appreciate what you said for this reason as well. If those other parcels are looking at coming in behind this parcel, we're potentially wasting other people's money and time if this is not have any real future moving forward to the courts in the near future if a yes is given. So I would hate to, our action further delay and cost other people money as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Question for the applicant, Mr. Miller. What is your schedule like on April the 20th?
Thank you for the question. If you give me a second to look at my calendar. That will be a one-year anniversary for me, but I am available.
Nothing says date night like a city council meeting.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm completely available for that date. Thank you so much.
Mr. Miller, would you prefer the 27th?
I would prefer the 20th.
Prefer the 27th?
Well, you know, I'm trying to get out of it. No, I'm, the 20th is very good. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, follow-up question.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Mr. Miller, you heard the, the commentary from my fellow council members, specifically Mr. Borton. Is all that clear to you and, and any concerns on your part?
No concerns, we appreciate the opportunity to further this conversation. Thank you for your time tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Motion if I may. I know that we continue item 24, the public hearing for Amble's Run subdivision H-2020-0124 to April 20th to allow the applicant to meet with the president of the homeowners association to discuss concerns and potential mitigation and to allow the applicant to provide a, a legal analysis or legal basis for their subdivision and for their proposed project.
Mr. Mayor, second the motion.
I have a motion to second, because you're in discussion on the motion. If not, all favor signified by, or do we need a voice vote for that machinery, or roll call vote?
Voice vote, vote, voice vote is fine.
Okay, all favor signified by Sanai.
Aye.
Opposed name. Yeah, I just have it, and the item is continued. Okay. Thank you very much, counsel. Should we take a 15-minute break and Henry can be at 8:30?
Yes, please.
Okay, council, are you ready to come back in? Excellent, then we will move on to our next item on the agenda. Which is a public. Just want to make sure I got the right one, Public Carrier for Compass Point subdivision age 2020 dash zero 100. I will open this public area with staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Subject site before you consists of.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt real quick, just for the record, Jessica, Councilwoman Perot has has had to leave the meeting. So she's no longer with us, so I wanted to get that out of the record, so.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. The subject site before you consists of 7.69 acres of land currently zoned RUT rural urban transition within the county. It is located at the southwest corner of Victory and Locust Grove intersection. There is county residential to the north that I believe did receive approval or is in the process of receiving approval as noted on the plan development map on the far right. Or a lower density subdivision. And there's single family residential and R eight zoning in all other directions. Project was heard, this project was heard by the planning and zoning commission on December 3rd, the commission recommended denial of the project. To the Meridian City Council, following this recommendation, the applicant made a request to the council to be remanded back to P and Z. With a revised plot and open space pursuant to the cons made within the staff report and by the commissioners. City council agreed to this request and remanded the project back. Main changes made by the applicant following this recommendation of denial are related to the number of residential units proposed, the road layout, the amount of usable open space. And the applicant is no longer requesting a PUD, a planned unit development. Therefore, the applications before you are for annexation and zoning. Of 7.69 acres of land with a request for their R 15 zoning district, a preliminary plaque consisting of 37 residential building lots. And 10 common lots on approximately 4.69 acres of land. And then a request for private streets throughout the development and alternative compliance to connect a private street directly to an arterial street. Private streets and alternative compliance are handled at the administrative level. The proposed uses are all single family residential, but in multiple forms. Attached townhomes, which are triplexes and attached duplexes and their detached, single family homes, approximately four. The project is proposed with a gross density of 4.94 dwellings per acre and a net density of 9.8. Which is lower than the previous proposal. The applicant is proposing to construct private streets that are 24 feet wide with five foot attached sidewalk on at least one side of the street throughout the project. In most cases on both sides of the street. The north end of the main street within the development, which is shown as compass lane on the landscape plans. The applicant is proposing an emergency only access out to Lucas or sorry out to Victory Road. This access is required if more than 30 homes are to be constructed, the proposed access for this development is to South Locust Grove. And lines up with East Coastline Street on the east side of Locust Grove, which is the access into trade winds and the future Teakwood subdivision further to the east. The access point into the development does not meet ACHD district policy, but they are modifying their policy to accommodate this access because this is the best place for the access. Because it is the furthest point away from the Locust Grove Victory intersection period for this obtuse triangle or acute triangle, and I remember fourth grade. This is largely because of the site constraints that do exist for the parcel. The site is a triangle shape as noted bordered on two sides by arterials and on one side by the 10 mile creek. There's no opportunity for public road connectivity or any road connectivity to any adjacent site. Therefore, ACHD recommended and prefers private streets. See requires that private streets are to be used in either a Mew or gated community, a Mew would be a Vista or a Paseo if you're from the west coast. This applicant has proposed a gate meeting these code requirements, which is approximately here, just for reference. Sorry, lost my place. They're proposing a gate meeting the code requirements, staff did recommend removing the parking spaces that are shown before the gate to ensure there is an area for vehicles to turn around. Should they enter on this private street on accident, the applicant is showing that revision on these plans. The proposed private streets are not wide enough to accommodate any on-street parking, so the applicant is proposing to construct extra off-street parking spaces. Along the main street as seen on the plat, there are no multi-use pathways proposed or required for the development. However, the applicant is proposing five, a five foot wide pathway on this side, this project side of the creek. And behind the proposed homes, this pathway connects to the private streets at the southern end of the project and through the common open space lot located mid block. The pathway also continues north and connects to the required sidewalk along Victory Road. In addition, staff recommended an additional pedestrian connection to the sidewalk along Locust Grove from the revised layout, which is this pedestrian connection here. And the five foot pathway I'm referring to is this one for reference. The applicant did submit revised plans showing compliance of this recommendation. There is no existing sidewalk along Victory or Locust Grove with both arterial streets are scheduled to be widened as part of. The ACHD roundabout project scheduled in 2021, 2022. According to ACHD, with the roundabout project, the applicant is required to dedicate additional right of way. For the intersection and future widening of Victory and Locust Grove. To be clear, the proposed plat does show the accommodated additional right of way. ACHD is requiring that the applicant enter into a road trust for the arterial sidewalk improvements. Instead of constructing them, since they will be constructed with the roundabout project. A minimum of 10% qualified open space. Is required for this project because it is over five acres in size. With the size of the plat, the applicant should supply at least 0.77 acres of qualified open space or approximately 33,500 square feet. The applicant is proposing 3.9 acres of open space of which 3.4 is called is shown as qualifying. Which is vastly more than the minimum, however, some of the area listed as qualified does not meet UDC standards due to their size not being at least 5,000 square feet. Or being near the dimensions of 50 by 100, once this area is removed, the qualified open spaces proposed is just under three acres. More importantly, the open space for this development is largely made up the 10 mile creek, which includes approximately 2.1 acres. And then the arterial street buffers, which are approximately 19,000 square feet. All of this area is qualifying, but the creek will be left natural as is required by code. And it'll be a buffer and more of a visual amenity than usable open space, what in the creek and generally mid-block. With the pathway in it. The applicants proposing an open space lot has approximately 5,700 square feet, this open space lot contains one of the amenities and a micro path that connects to the private street. And to the pathway along the creek. This open space lot and micro path offers a clear connection to the attached sidewalks throughout the development and to the additional open space lot. More centrally located within development. This 5,700 square foot open space slot is the most active and usable open space slot within the development in general, the applicant. In general, the applicant has increased the usable open space throughout the site following the commission's recommendation of denial. And other comments made by them and staff, but the reduction in unit count and additional centralized open space staff finds a proposal open space, not only in excess of code requirements, but also an improvement from previous layouts. The applicant submitted conceptual elevations. For the proposed attached single family homes, both duplexes and the triplexes, the submitted elevation show all two-story structures, the two-car garages and finishing materials of wood and stone. In addition, the elevation show modern architecture designs with shed roofs. Second story patios with glass railings and stone accents that go from grade to the full height of the homes. Attached single family homes required designer view. Prior to submitting for building permit, and at that point, staff will ensure full compliance with the architectural standards manual. Commission did recommend approval of the subject applications following the remand. There is a number of public testimony provided at the hearing. The key issues, the key issues were the density of the project. And the additional traffic that would be added to the adjacent intersection streets, they were. Discussion on whether the project complies with the comprehensive plan and in that it is a different type of residential than surrounding neighborhood. And that the proposed density is high density residential when adjacent neighborhoods are not. This was a sticking point where I had to do a zoning 101 conference with the hearing, just to discuss that the zoning is not tied to the density. Or I should say the density is not tied to the zoning is tied to the future land use. And it is in fact in compliance with the density requirements within the comprehensive plan for the medium density residential designation. The commission discussed all these issues as well as the density with the revised plat following the loss of 11 total lots. Showing this latest revision and they reviewed the changes that have occurred following. The only outstanding issues for council are some conditions of approval regarding the plat and the landscape plan were not revised. However, those issues can be handled at the final plat stage, they are miniscule and administrative points relating to. There were two pieces of testimony provided following the commission hearing, one from a Kristen Thompson. She opposes the project based on the density and that it does not match the surrounding development and. I believe a neighbor to the west, but I miss Patricia Johnson, who had concerns over the existing trees that are within the irrigation easement and abutting the 10 mile creek. And noting overall safety concerns of within the creek, should any changes occur to the site regarding landscaping. Following that, I will stand for any questions by council.
Thank you, Joe, council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Joe, do you know the the distance from the entrance to the neighborhood to like the center point of that proposed roundabout? And if you don't, I don't expect you to know off the top of your head, but maybe to get that piece of information either for you, potentially for the applicant, potentially later.
Councilman Cavanagh, I do not have that off the top of my head, the applicant might know he he took the underlying CAD drawing from ACHD in order to design the plat, so he probably have that answer for you.
Thanks, Joe.
And Mr. Mayor.
Catherine Holden.
Joe, along those same lines, I was just curious and looking at your your PowerPoint you had up there. Went and you talked about the widening of both Locust Grove and Victory happening 21, 22. And where their entrance and exit would be, it didn't, it it was narrow at that time, but showing the roundabout, is that part of that expansion or is it just the roundabout?
Councilman Logan, that's a great question, and that was brought up in the previous commission hearing as well, so to. I clarified with ACHD that the roundabout project will go all the way to the end of their property, which includes the little bridge. Over the creek and all of that area is supposed to be widened, which will greatly help with pedestrian safety in that area.
Okay, thank you.
Council, any further questions? Okay, then I will ask the applicant to please come forward and say their name and address and be recognized for 15 minutes.
Mayor, members of the city council for the record, my name is Steve Arnold with 18 land consultants. Business address is 1785 Whisper Cove, Boise, 83709. And just just to preface my my presentation, I did have computer issues. Earlier with my internet going down, if for any reason it does go down again, I'll call in and I. Joe, I emailed you a copy of my presentation, so with that said, I'll share my screen. Joe pretty much explained the the site layout. And I I'll add to that, I do have some renderings of the type of buildings. One of the reasons that we're doing the buildings that we are is we're trying to get some diversity of housing types out in that area. So Joe kind of went over all of this. I'll go over kind of our old layout, this is what the city planning and zoning commission denied, and one of the reasons there was. The massing along here was. More than they liked, they also didn't like this long straight street and these two dead end roads. So we ended up modifying to something like this with what I call is a lollipop instead of two dead end streets. This just gives you kind of an idea of the view, this is looking from Locust Grove North at our entrance. As you can see along here, there is some bending in the roads and we did break up some, a lot of the sod and the walls along there. This is from the north looking south. And again, just another different angle that you could see that the the angulation of the roadway. This would be a view looking at our central park here, looking north and west. And then this is a view from that park, looking at the other little pocket park on the east side of the road. And again, you can see kind of the the buildings and the the different massings that we're proposing to to help break up a lot of that. General massing along the road that we previously had when the commission denied. I don't know, and maybe Joe, you can answer this, do we need to go back into the changes in the draft DA that we we had approved at. Planning and zoning commission, if we don't, I'll just move along.
Steve, no, if council makes a recommendation, when they make a recommendation, it'll include those changes.
Okay. So I'll just go simply through the modifications that we did from the time we were denied by the planning and zoning to the time they approved it. So we went from 48 building lots down to 37, and as again Joe noted, our density went from 6.24. Lots per acre down to 4.81. And then we, by doing so, we also complied with the setbacks before we were asking for some relief of the setbacks. So which in turn eliminated the need for the PUD. We increased also the housing variety, we decreased the number of triplexes. Increase some single family and townhomes in there to get a greater mix. And then we had some in the previous layout, some odd shaped lots, which also then created some odd shaped housing. And we eliminated that completely. And again, as what Joseph noted, we went from roughly 3.28 acres of open space to 3.7. 35 to 44% increase. With the increase of open space, we also added the addition of a dog park, I don't know that that was brought up in the. The discussion, but up north along here, we've created an additional park, it's just, I believe, under 6,000 square feet. So the roadways, again, we eliminated the two den ends created a lollipop. Which eliminated the need for fire turnarounds. And again, as noted, we we put some S turns in the north-south lane to help break up massing and also create some. Different angulations with the building. We added the gated entry and we added pedestrian crossings along with a turnaround. So there we did staff's recommendation, we eliminated some off-street parking right south of the gate. And and. Provided that so that cars entering that weren't by mistake, they could at least turn around fairly easy. That I put this together just to give you an idea. The, this property currently utilizes all of the, the city services. You know, school, police, fire, emergency services, et cetera. And this just kind of gives you an idea that what this site and its development will generate for the fees and taxes, roughly the, the one-time fees upfront will be in that five hundred and sixty thousand range. And then the taxes annually will be the roughly the one fifty seven. And all these numbers here are the current levy rates that are within the city. Basically, and I'll, I'll keep my end short, but we're asking for approval of the project because we've complied with all of city code. We've met the comp plan and we made all the staff recommendations. You know, we've been working with Joe on this for about ten months. So we've had a lot of his time and we appreciate all of the city's comments and input. We've, we have also taken in all the neighborhood concerns about the density and have greatly reduced it. We, we took all of the commission's recommendations or reasons for our previous denial and have made those changes. And now we do have their approval. We, I, I don't think I've ever worked on such a small subdivision that we provided as much open space as we did, but it, we do have quite a bit. Not to mention the, the amenities that we're putting within those open spaces. I think we've exceeded many kind of requirement for the city. You know, we're, we're, we're in this for the long haul. We're, the developer is also the builder. So it's, you know, his reason for doing a nice project is not just to, to blow and go through the lots, but he's going to be building these things. So you know, it'd be his beho of him to, you know, spend the money upfront and get higher returns on his homes that he builds. You know, and then us, we're continued to commitment to providing quality neighborhoods. I've done quite a bit of work with Meridian and I, I don't think that there's any one subdivision that can be, I guess, downplayed or that I regret doing. I think we've done good work within the city. The housing type, you know, I can go into the real estate market here, which is crazy stupid. We also market subdivisions. We are fully aware of the demand and our pricing has brought up earlier. You know, lumber prices are through the roof. So I think we're, we're providing a, a product type that I is in demand and will help out some of the housing demands. The site is infill. I mean, you know, the, it's currently using the city services. You know, by developing it, we're going to be able to bring in some fees and funds that'll help find, finance those. And annexing the property frankly will financially help pay existing service in, in the immediate area. Based on that, we're asking for your approval and I appreciate your time and I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Mr. Holman.
It was Mr. Cavanagh. Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Steve, thanks for your, your presentation. I'll ask you the same question I asked staff. What's the distance between the entrance to your proposed neighborhood in that roundabout?
If I can share another screen, if I could figure that out, I'll get you that answer. I lost it.
Sorry, I stopped that one so you could start anew.
Oh, gotcha. Can you see this? Okay, I'll measure it. I don't fully know right off the top of my head. So if you go near edge. Seven hundred and sixty-five feet.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Yes, Councilman Hogue.
You guys, I can't see your faces.
Four for two.
This from home is for the birds. I'm just going to be honest with you. Councilman Hogue.
Mr. Arnold, a question about the timing of your project. If this were to be approved, what when's your start date? When do you plan on finishing up all those plans that you, you have?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hogue. Following, assuming we get approval, we would immediately turn around and start engineering drawings. Typically it takes between two to four months from the time you start to the, the time that you complete. We'll be coordinating with ACHD. I believe they start the roundabout this summer. I anticipate a five to six month construction window and our proposal is to build, build the entire thing in one phase.
So, Mr. Mayor, follow up.
Councilman Hogue.
Mr. Arnold, the homes would be up for sale January of next year. What, what, what is that timeframe and when is the completion of, of the roundabout scheduled?
The, the completion of the roundabout, I believe is in November, December. I don't think it's a very large project for ACHD. But I do believe it was going to be completed either at or around the time that we would start construction. But the, the, if the question is, will the, when the housing starts, will the roundabout be done? And yes, I fully envision that.
Thank you.
Counsel, any further questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Mr. Court, could we have maybe sent up to provide testimony on this item?
Mr. Mayor, in signups, no one indicated they wish to testify, but there are people present and I'll call up Mr. John Buckner.
Okay. And if there's anybody who's on the Zoom call, you'd like to provide testimony, please use the raise your hand feature and we can bring you in for, to testify. Name and address for the record, please.
John Buckner, I live on three eight seven seven South Picasso Avenue, Meridian. I'm right down the street from this intersection. I want to thank the council, Mayor Simpson, for the opportunity to speak. I want to say that I love Meridian. And I'm for development. I'm for growth. I'm just for growth that makes sense. And that really isn't inappropriate. For example, sticking on R fifteen zone right in the middle of an area that consists primarily of R eights and R fours just really doesn't make sense. I would like to see a revised plan of no more than an R eight and a reduction of a minimum of about ten units to the design. And just to add on to what Planner Dodson said, there are about fifty entries in the website, just to let you know. Voicing contest of the plan. The application does not comply with many of the city standards or the comprehensive plan besides those that were gone over. For example, the subdivision design and improvement standards, UDC eleven three C six requires that off-street parking is provided. The application did not comply with these standards. According to the staff report, the private roads and available spaces don't accommodate this requirement. The staff recommended the developer car and bylaws. That garages be forbidden use as storage, which Commissioner Seal in a previous hearing already said is a very likelihood. So that whatever space is available in the parking spaces and on the pads is probably not going to be efficiently used and cars are going to be spilling over, causing congestion and potential safety hazards for the neighborhood. Also, the, it doesn't comply with many action items of the comprehensive plan. For example, five point zero one dot zero zero, which requires to sustain entrance, promote, sustain, enhance, promote and protect elements and contribute to the livelihood and quality of life for the residents. Adding thirty seven units is about two cars each. That's about seventy four units. The density is really going to make things not, not a high quality of life for the existing residents or even new ones for that matter. According to the December staff report, there were thirty crashes in the past year within one mile of the intersection. I've had the opportunity to witness two of them after the fact. So jamming in seventy four vehicles in this area is not really going to help that situation. Also, according to five dot zero one dot zero two E, comprehensive plan requires to support and protect the identity of existing residential neighborhoods. As you've seen in the photos and also on this plan, the houses take a drastic deviation from the identity and the character of the rest of the neighborhood, which does not really comply with that. The homes are very town home and modern styled, not like the homes that already pose some diversity. For example, I live in Green Valley, which is right across the street from Tuscany, a very beautiful development to Steve Arnold's credit. However, there is much diversity in that neighborhood without going to the drastic effect of making our nice community look like a, an urban city, a very modern city. And I don't think that's a necessary step in order to add diversity to our, our city. Anyway, I would like to thank you for the opportunity and please consider what we, how we feel because you do represent us. Thank you.
Counsel, any questions? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, nobody, excuse me, nobody online? Looking in the room, anyone else? I believe everyone has testified, Mr. Mayor.
Would the applicant like to make any final comments?
Yes, I would. Can I also share my screen again? And I'll, I'll just go through some of his highlights. I guess Joe could probably do this better than me, but give the R fifteen discussion about zoning. You know, I'm, we're not going in R fifteen so that we could bump the density up. And if we did the R ten, I, there's not an R ten, but the RA, the dimensional standards don't work for the product type that we're trying to do. So that, the only reason we're going for R fifteen is not density, but dimensional standards. It was brought up that the garages not be used for storage. We fully intend to do that through our CCNRs. I know the city through previous hearing, you, you, you guys don't enforce CCNRs, nor do most other cities, but that's something that we also want. And we're, we've done it in other subdivisions that we've worked in and it's worked. So our plan is to do it in this one. But regardless of the the off, the, the parking, we're, there's a place on lot one, block four that we're adding additional parking on. Our concern is also parking. We don't want to have parking be an issue. The garage, so assuming we'll put those in the CCNRs are also, we also have two parking stalls outside of the garage. And some of these units are two bed, two and a half bath. So we're exceeding parking quite a bit. There was a statement about additional traffic and accidents. I, the traffic out there as the intersection currently sits is a problem. ACHD recognize that in their analysis. But they also recognize that there, it's a short-term issue. And by the time that our traffic hits the road, we'll have a fully improved intersection with a roundabout that has a significant less accident rates than a stop control or a stoplight control signal. So that problem all goes away. I, I chose the modern design out there because I didn't see anything out in that area. And our plan is to market the subdivision. So I think it would be a product type that would meet a demand that's not in the area. If it's the direction of the council that you want us to do a different design type, we can certainly do that. And as Joe stated, this project goes through a design review. So this is not the last time that the city will see this. You know, and again, we're not tied in any way to the specific design. I just personally thought it would be a good hit out there, but we'll do whatever the city wants us on that. And that's all the follow-up I have, but I'll stand for questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any additional questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Just to kind of ask Mr. Arnold a question about, are, are you aware that in, in the past, we've had some annexations if they're above five acres that we have continued them to a, a date certain beyond the, what we think would be the end of the legislative session due to some of the legislation that's been proposed regarding property taxes and the impact it would have to our city budgets? I don't know if you're aware of that or not.
Mayor, Councilman Hogue, yeah, I was given that heads up by the, the staff. Joe gave us a heads up and he wasn't sure. And at the time I asked, you know, do we ask for continuation and just not, you know, I guess present it tonight? And it was recommended that we do that. One of my reasons for putting together that financial analysis was that, you know, as it currently sits, I, I think that the, the city's better off, you know, annexing this property than not. Although I'm not that familiar with the legislature. I did see some dates in there that, that it was going to affect properties annexed after July of twenty twenty one. And I didn't fully understand that. So I, I've been made aware that this was a concern by the city.
Mr. Mayor, follow up.
Councilman Holman.
Yeah, and, and you're correct. And then one particular piece of legislation that we were following did, did lose in the state senate by one vote. However, the session is not over. It's, it's been made very clear by certain members of the house that it is a top priority for them to, to reduce city budgets, which for a growing community like Meridian impacts our ability to pay for services that growth requires. And I guess that's a question for, for counsel at this point in time. Do we want to have a further discussion about this? Now that we've gone through the testimony, or do we wish to pause and, and move it to a, a date certain till after the legislature adjourns? This is seven point six nine acres, kind of somewhat qualifies for infill, but I, I would think based on our, our previous conversation that we had kind of decided anything above five acres due to the impacts, we would wait until we know, we have some certainty about what the legislature is going to do. So what's, what's the desire of the council when it comes to that?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Gordon.
I'm glad you brought that up, Councilman Hogue. I think it's most prudent to stay the course. I think our cautious continuances to see what the financial landscape is, is still the right way to go. For the exact reasons we stated earlier and I think that applies to this project. Just defers the decision until we've got the legislation and the session completed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Yeah, I think consistency in how we treat applications is really important right now so that we're not creating an atmosphere of winners and losers. We're treating each one sticking to our guidelines that we laid out. I do want to state that I think some of the changes that the applicant made, I really applaud and think some of these changes have been really positive overall for the project. It gets headed in the right direction, but I do agree that probably continuing this until after the legislature hopefully is done, then we'll all breathe a sigh of relief and we'll be able to go about our business at that point.
Mr. Mayor, this Councilmember.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree with my fellow council members. I'll be real frank, I've got some real concerns about this project. And we'll welcome the opportunity to address those with the, with the applicant at, at a later point in time. I would just maybe urge the council as we think about this. I know we've been continuing them with the hope of having those continuances begin in, in mid to late April with, with the legislature taking a, a two-week pause. It sounds like that they're not gonna be wrapped up for the end of the year until probably the end of April. So as we contemplate when we want to continue this project too, I think it's important that we don't schedule it so quickly that we then are kind of recontinuing it at a later point in time. So you might want to be looking towards maybe a council meeting in mid to late May.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hoagland here. Uh, yeah, and, and that is, is something we're, we're looking at. They'd like to get wrapped up within two weeks after going back in. But you know, that oftentimes is, is not achieved. But I, I think if, if looking at the schedule, consulting with the city clerk, April twenty-seventh is, is a, a possibility that they could be done. And we do have an opening there without having stacks of, of hearings at night. Mr. Arnold, is that something that's work, workable for you?
Say again, the time was late April?
April twenty-seventh.
It, it is doable for my schedule. I can make that work. And one of my thoughts is, i- if this new legislature only affects properties greater than five acres, we can, I, I mean, the, the, the channel or the ten-mile creek there. We could split that off and we could just annex the development ground because we don't need that property to develop.
Mr. Mayor. Yeah, Mr. Mayor and, and Mr. Arnold, yeah, you probably misunderstood my, my five-acre comment because that was more of what we decided if the parcel is five acres or greater, that's requesting annexation, we would give pause. We were trying to find, do we do everything that's requesting an annexation? And we determined there are some really true infill developments that the two-acre, three-acre parcels are infill. But above five acres, it was just our cutoff for determining, okay, what are we gonna pause on? What will we continue to hear? And the five acres is what we kind of came to a consensus on. So, yeah, it doesn't matter. You, you're, you're requesting annexation for that whole side of seven point six nine acres. So that kind of falls into that unfortunately for, for you. And we really don't know, they could put an emergency clause in future legislation that starts when it becomes law, if it becomes law. So we just have to be prudent. You know, we are a physically conservative community and how we spend money and we'd rather save and, and pay for it and not borrow. And we think that's the best way to go. So we just want to make sure we know the impacts to our, our budgets before we approve development that we, we aren't able to fully realize revenue from to pay for the impact. So nothing, nothing about your project that, that is, is unworthy. But, you know, certainly we're just doing this with a number of other projects as well. So hopefully you understand.
Mayor, Councilman Hoagland, yes, I do. I, I do have a, a follow-up question for Councilman Cavanagh. You said you had some concerns with the property. Is there something that we should be looking at trying to do before our next meeting?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Cavanagh. Thanks, Steve. Appreciate the question. I mean, I think for me, there, there's a host of concerns. My biggest concern is the amount of units on, on that particular piece of land. And particularly how it's one entrance and one exit and it's close proximity to, to Locust Grove. You know, some of my concerns are about the parking that's, that's not made, made available. I mean, it was one of my questions. You said that you've got a a, a spot where you're gonna be putting additional parking. I, I'd be curious how many spots that is and if you would show us where that is. I mean, those can be conversations at a later point in time where we can discuss that this evening. Well, I, I've got some kind of head scratches about the, the architectural design of it. That's not a piece that I necessarily get into. You know the market better than I. And if somebody's interested in buying something that looks like that, I'm all for it. But, you know, we heard from some of the members of the public and it was definitely shared at the Planning and Zoning Commission, the amount of units that you're trying to put in kind of a, again, I recognize it's a challenging infill spot. But if your only concerns about the dimensional standards, you could achieve that with fewer units as well. So those are some of my overall concerns, why I'm not quite sold that this is the, the best use of that particular land and that particular part of our community.
Mr. Mayor. Unless we have any more comments about this to, to prepare for continuance. I would move that we continue the public hearing for H twenty twenty dash zero one zero zero to April twenty seventh.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to continue this item. Is there any discussion on the motion? I'll just make a quick comment on, on the, on the motion and on this part, on this parcel. I, I do think it's a good thing for this parcel's future to be decided as this roundabout gets put in. I think the timing is appropriate for a whole host of reasons. So hopefully there is a solution out there that can be come to either at the next meeting or future. Because this is always, this is gonna be a huge challenge long-term. But I also applaud the council's continued discretion as we wait for the resolution on property tax legislation. So with that, I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, six five by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the motion is agreed to and we'll pick this up again at the end of April. Thank you, Mr. Arnold. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Steve.
Okay, next up, we have moved on to item six under ordinances, which is the second and third reading of ordinance number twenty-one dash one nine one six. I will ask the clerk to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's an ordinance adding a new section to Meridian City Code, section seven dash two dash B eight regarding prohibited parking in front of mailboxes, adopting a savings, savings clause and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Counsel, any discussion or do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Gordon.
We approve ordinance number twenty-one dash nineteen one six.
Second, the motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve order number twenty-one dash one nine one six. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I was under the impression we were gonna have a public hearing on this. That was the discussion last week is that we were adding a public hearing to this item.
I don't think that was decided in the conversation. I think it was part of the conversation about what not we would or wouldn't. I recall council, at least council president burnt indicating that he felt like that we were not gonna have anybody. And that was my position as well, but no public hearing was added on this item.
Mr. Mayor.
That was my impression as well. I knew, we had the discussion and I thought it ended up that we would not have a public hearing, so.
Mr. Mayor, my, my recollection was, was different. I, I appreciate your feedback, Mr. Hoagland's feedback. Is what it is, but I was under the impression that we were gonna have a public hearing, so.
It's, it's Bill. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so a public hearing doesn't have to be separately noticed for a reading. So you can simply call the question in the room. There are people still here. So I don't know if they're here for this ordinance, but you don't need to notice it separately if that's your concern.
Mr. Mayor. I guess I'll speak to at least my, my surprises. I, I'd heard from members of our community who did want to testify on this. Clear there are people that are in the room. Again, I don't want to set an inappropriate precedent. I'm happy to support whatever the body wants to do. I don't think that I could be supportive of this ordinance without a public hearing personally. That's just my personal view. But I'll leave it up to the body to decide how we want to move forward.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Gordon.
The reason I was comfortable moving forward is this is the fourth time it's been on a public agenda with an opportunity for folks to comment, both in the meetings and catching us offline over the course of the last four months. So I'm comfortable moving forward. I just feel like we've had complete ample opportunity for anybody who wants to participate, share their information to do so. And many have some. So prepared to make a decision.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
I was prepared to make a decision and vote on it. But if what Mr. Neri is saying is that you could just open it right now for folks that may have had a different impression and let them testify at this time in case they were confused. I would support that if that is possible now. I don't want to hold this up longer than tonight. But if someone, yeah, it sounds like there is some miscommunication. I'm more on board with getting everybody on board. If we can open it up right now for anybody that may have been under a different impression, had comments, I'm, I'd support that at this time if that's possible.
Is there anybody in the room or online that would like to provide comments on this item?
That's Mr. Mr. Mayor, looks like we have someone.
Okay, they'd like to come forward and make comments for three minutes.
Mr. Mayor and council members. Um, I'm, my name's Thad Butterworth. I reside at four seven eight East Lake Creek Street in Meridian.
I'm sorry, what was the name again? I missed that.
Thad Butterworth.
Thank you.
Yes, um, I am urging you to vote no on this ordinance. And there's one main reason and that reason is that this ordinance is taking the self-governance away from people where they could just be responsible citizens and do what they need to do, have discussions with neighbors and work things out. I'll just say I have had issues like this where neighbors have blocked mailboxes before. And a simple conversation was all it took to resolve the issue. Did not require laws, did not require more fines, it did not require handing over more power to the government. This, we really have to be careful in this time to not continue to have overreaching government mandates. Quite frankly, we have enough already that even a businessman like me is having to do all sorts of things to make my business work just because of the overreaching man, mandates, some of them having been passed by this council. So we really need to be careful about adding more laws and more ordinances when most of our people are responsible anyways. And, and quite frankly, the postmasters general have tools that they can use that are at their disposal that they can use to deal with these sorts of issues if you have consistent, someone's consistently violating the laws that are already on the books. It is already illegal to interfere with the delivery of mail. I'm sure you're all aware of that. Adding this parking ordinance is only going to create more problems. You're also now talking about micromanaging people. So anytime you start to micromanage people, there are always unintended consequences. I'll tell you a couple of them I'm concerned about right now. One is parking. You know, our, we are already facing some major parking issues in this city. And if we pass this ordinance, we're going to increase those issues. You're also talking about putting more burden on law enforcement to go around and write these tickets and everything else. And quite frankly, most of this can be solved between neighbors and it has been for quite a while. And I've seen it, like I said, even personally in my life. I, I really would urge the city council to not pass this ordinance. There's no reason for it. It can be handled in much better ways and you're just adding more government overreach in a time when we're already concerned about how much there is. Thank you.
Counsel, any questions? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Code enforcement is in the room and, and if she would like to speak, because I, I think she's talked before about how they are planning on going about with the enforcement. Certainly understand that's comments. You know, we don't want to have a government overreach. We want people to resolve the problems first. But there are times you get people who don't want to follow laws and could care less about their neighbors. So for those rare occasions, fortunately in Meridian, we do need, I think, some enforcement tools and that's what this would give us. So if, if we could have code enforcement come up and talk about how you plan on going about dealing with people in, in these situations.
Lacey Oi, code enforcement supervisor. We address most of our parking complaints on a complaint basis and it's also an educational system. So our goal would be to educate someone of the violation. And if they were within a close proximity of, you know, eight feet as opposed to ten feet, that'd be issuing a warning or contacting them. Our goal would be to get the vehicles to move, but without the code being on the books, we don't have the ability to ask for that. So it would just be a way of giving us a tool to be able to educate people on that. And I would say a good majority of our job is dealt with in the areas of neighbors that don't talk to neighbors.
Thank you, counseling. Questions or comments for Lacey? Thank you, Lacey. Is there anybody else that'd like to provide comments on this item? If there's anybody online that'd like to provide comments, you can use the raise your hand feature. Seeing nothing else, counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Gordon.
I think that brings up a lot of valid comments about the ordinance and the role of government. And I think that's some of the balancing considerations that this ordinance poses upon us, kind of the pros and cons of doing so. And understanding that code enforcement is looking at this with a focus on education and trying to facilitate compliance, not to be heavy-handed. Certainly we'll have internal data to see how much communication we have, how this tool utilizes improving the independent decision-making of our citizens. I think that can be a net positive. We'll certainly keep an eye on it. So with that education constructive focus, I still recommend that we proceed forward with the ordinance.
First, counsel, my, my apologies for misunderstanding our meeting last week. Apologies for throwing a, a wrinkle in kind of a procedural piece. I really appreciate, I think, what's trying to be intended here and appreciate Councilmember Borton for bringing this forth. It's, again, you guys know my sheer joy about local government that we wrestle on, you know, these little things are big things to us. You know, Councilmember Borton pointed out, we've been talking about this, it seems like for, for a number of months. And along the way, I've, I voiced my concern about, I think that the, the length of distance is, is too high. And my overall concerns about this being weaponized amongst neighbors who aren't able to get along. I think Councilmember Borton did a really good job of making the, the life safety case about we don't want to stop the postal service from being able to deliver crucial medications to the, the public or the people who are ordering them. So I did a little bit of research just for everyone's benefit. The vast majority of, of lifesaving medications that typically come directly from a pharmacy or direct from the manufacturer are shipped via FedEx or UPS. So they're delivered to the doorstep. In addition, Amazon, which is, you know, building a facility here in Meridian that, that does pills also has an agreement with the postal service to deliver those, to sign for them at the doorstep. So I've, I've, I've kind of weighed the, the life safety benefit with the, the common sense benefit. And I, I just have come to the crux that I think ten feet on both sides of the, of the postal box or the mailbox is just too high for me. You know, I, I think I'd be supportive of something that's much smaller. It sounds like that doesn't work for the postal service. So I appreciate the good conversations about this. I, I just haven't been able to get to the threshold that I can be supportive of the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Support the ordinance. I appreciate Mr. Butterworth's comments as well. However, I don't believe that the existence of an ordinance absolves all of us from using common sense and being good neighbors. This is a tool and I'm confident that the code enforcement team will use education and that they'll use the tool wisely. And if it's not being used wisely, we will certainly revisit. But at the end of the day, to me, the. You know, the the risk of not having this tool, I think, is greater, and the impacts potentially to people are greater. I think it's medic, you know, let's say that twenty percent of the medications come through the postal service. But that's still a pretty important thing for somebody, right, and I. I don't think that the inconvenience of someone really weighs against that. Than moving their car if our enforcement team tells them to and they don't want to listen. So that's where I'm falling on it. At first I thought ten feet each direction seemed a lot. But given the fact that the vehicle itself is fourteen feet, and that we're going to be leading with education, that that's where I fall in, is in support.
Council, any further conversation or a motion?
Mr. Mayor, there is a motion and a second if it still stands.
Oh. Okay, then the motion and a second still stands, any further dialogue? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Borden.
Aye.
Cavaner. Strater.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
Three ayes, one aye, the ordinance is approved and passed. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number twenty one dash nineteen twenty three, ask the clerk to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, it's an ordinance repealing Meridian City Code, section seven dash one dash fourteen regarding handheld devices and providing an effective date.
Council, you've heard this ordinance read by title, is there anybody that like it read in its entirety?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavaner.
Cavaner, sorry, sorry, Mr. Mayor, just for your benefit, nobody in the room is raising their hand to to want it here red and full, so. I'm happy to make a motion if that's okay.
Mr. Cavaner, could I put something on the record first for a moment? So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I just wanted to put on the record so that it's clear from the public's perspective. We passed this ordinance in November of twenty nineteen, we did a public education process in enforcement, we began enforcing it in January of twenty twenty. And enforced it throughout twenty twenty. The Idaho Legislature passed a similar ordinance prohibiting handheld devices during the legislative session last year, it went into effect in July. And they did the education program till the end of the year, and I began enforcing it in January. I checked with our prosecuting agency, there are no more citations left under this ordinance. So it is repetitive, and that was the basis for why the repeal was there. Since we hadn't talked about it previously, I just wanted to make sure it was clear on the record, we weren't taking something away, we were simply not duplicating what's already being done by the state.
Thank you, Mr. Neri. Mr. Cavaner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I move we approve ordinance number twenty one dash one nine two three with suspension of rules.
Take in the motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number twenty one dash nineteen twenty three under suspension of the rules, is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all favors signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the ordinance is agreed to. Next up is item twenty eight, which is ordinance number twenty one dash nineteen twenty five, ask the clerk to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is an ordinance amending title one, chapter seven, section ten of Meridian City Code regarding the procedure for requests for reconsideration of a land use decision and providing an effective date.
Mr. Neri, would you like to make any comments as we put this on the record?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so the basis of this was we had an earlier request for reconsideration that was delivered to the. Planning department, to a planner, the discussion at the time was all city service of any type of legal documentation goes to the clerk. So the purpose of the ordinance was to direct people from the state code to the city code to give them the procedure they needed to follow to request this. Process, and we wanted to make sure it didn't get lost, it didn't get misplaced, it didn't get misdirected. The clerk's office will know what to do, this is why it's just to clean up, in my opinion, to just make sure it's clear, everything goes to the clerk, and then we'll get disseminated from there.
Thank you. Council, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavaner, did I ask if anyone liked it read in its entirety, I think I did. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Ritter, just staff and council left in in chambers right now, so I. Move that we approve ordinance number two one dash one nine two five with suspension of rules.
I get the motion, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion, a second to approve ordinance. Number twenty one dash nineteen twenty five, under suspension of the rules, is there a discussion? If not, all favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the ordinance is adopted.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
Very briefly, thank you to your office and to legal, this is something that came up and got remedied relatively quickly, it got on the faster track of a ordinance improvement. So thank you for making sure that happened and it didn't get lost in the mix, so.
Yes, we're we're trying to get more efficient in how we move things forward that come up, they're quick fixes.
No doubt.
Next up is ordinance number twenty one dash nineteen twenty two, ask the clerk to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, it's an ordinance related to H twenty twenty zero one one five, Schneppley, annexation for annexation of a parcel of land being a portion of the southwest quarter of the southeast quarter of section eight, township three north, range one east, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho. As described in attachment A, and annexing certain lands and territories situated in Ada County, Idaho. And adjacent contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Meridian, as requested by the city of Meridian. Establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of zero point seven four nine acres of land. From R U T to R two, low density residential zoning district in the Meridian City Code. Providing the copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law. And providing for a summary of the ordinance and providing for a waiver of the reading rules and providing an effective date.
Thank you, council, you've heard this ordinance read by title, is anybody that like it's read in its entirety? If not, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Cavaner.
Councilman Cavaner.
Move we approve ordinance number two one dash one nine two two with suspension of rules. I get the motion, Mr. Mayor.
A motion, a second to approve ordinance number twenty one dash nineteen twenty two under suspension of the rules, is there a discussion on the motion? If not, all favors signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the ordinance is agreed to, next up is ordinance number twenty one dash nineteen twenty four. Ask the clerk to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, it's an ordinance H twenty twenty or related to H twenty twenty zero zero nine nine mile high pines. For annexation of a parcel of land located in the northeast one quarter of the southeast one quarter of section ten. Township three north, range one east, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, adjacent contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Meridian as requested by the city of Meridian. Establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of seventeen point four six acres of land. From R U T to R fifteen, medium high density residential, eleven point four four acres, and C C, community business, business district, six point zero two acre zoning districts in the Meridian City Code. Providing the copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor. The Ada County Recorder and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law. And providing for a summary of the ordinance and providing for a waiver of the reading rules and providing an effective date.
Thank you, council, you've heard this ordinance read by title, is anybody that like it read in its entirety?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Cavaner.
Councilman Cavaner.
Nobody's raising their hands, so I move we approve ordinance number two one dash one nine two four with suspension of rules.
I get the motion, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion, a second to approve ordinance number twenty one dash nineteen twenty four under suspension of the rules, is there a discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, motion is agreed to, and the ordinance is passed. Council, anything on the future meeting meeting topics this evening?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavaner.
Not necessarily a future meeting topic, I just, I want to reiterate my apology to you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for for misunderstanding our meeting last week, and. Well, the person who told me they were going to come and testify didn't, I appreciate you accommodating the members of the public and. At least letting them that sat through our meeting to hear it out, and again, sincere apologies for not tracking the agenda properly.
I I understand why there's confusion, it's not always a clear yes or no, but it. The will of the council appeared to be in that direction as well with myself, so. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor, move to adjourn. I get.
Motion and a second to adjourn, all favors signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay, the ayes have it, we are adjourned.
Good night, everyone.